It is now seven o'clock.
Thank you, Jason. I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order for Monday, May 24th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Wu? Ms. Wu?
Ms. Wu is ill tonight.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Wilkins?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin? Present. Next item is approval of minutes of the previous meeting for May 10th, 2021. Is there a motion for approval?
I'm moved to approve the minutes for May 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Well, it says May 10, 2021. I'm sorry.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Chris Evans. Is there any correction? I do have one, Madam Clerk. Under elected officials physically present, my name should have an E at the end, W O L F E. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other corrections?
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry, is he here yet?
Yes.
Thank you. Is that it? That's it. Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? I did want to note, normally we've put council input and communications to follow public input and presentations. And I'd like to continue that practice tonight. Do we need a motion to make that change, Phyllis? No, you don't. Okay. Is there any objection to putting council input and communications following public input? Okay, we'll go ahead and do that. All right, tonight, we have two presentations which will go first. The first is by Carl Foundation Hospital. It's a campus overview and then a brief description of a project that you will be, an item that will be appearing on an agenda in the near future. That'll be followed by the budget presentation for the fiscal year 22 budget. So I'd like to welcome for representing Carl, Lynn Barnes, and Beth Katsinas, and I'm not sure anyone else is representing.
Nick Crompton is here also.
Oh, Nick Crompton, thank you. And go ahead, Lynn.
All right, okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Marlin. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lynn Barnes, and I serve as the President of Carl Foundation Hospital, and it is a privilege to be here with you tonight. We're going to do a couple of things, give you a little bit of an overview of kind of Carl and some of the growth, and a little bit of information on the Carl Illinois College of Medicine, because I think Mayor Marlin thought you guys would find that interesting. And then also, we're going to hear from Beth Katsinas, who's Vice President of our philanthropy, and talk about a project that we have in the offing that we want to share with you and give you kind of a preview of. So I'll go ahead and share my screen if that is okay, or do you want to go ahead and drive, Lori, or?
Go ahead, Lynn.
Okay, I'll share my screen. Can you guys see that all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. All right. Um, here we go. All right, well, let me give you a little bit of an overview. You'll see here, I'm not going to go through every detail, but I'm showing you a map of Illinois and Indiana. And the red area is our, what we would consider our service area, and in that, we've got about 1.5 million people. And what I think is important to kind of point out here is that over the past five to six years, Carl has really had a lot of growth in terms of hospitals. Of course, Carl Foundation Hospital, which is located right here in Urbana, we are a 500, 453-bed hospital. And, but just recently, we purchased and integrated with two other hospitals in our region, and that is Bromen in Bloomington-Normal and Eureka in Eureka, Illinois. So Bromen is a 221-bed hospital in Bloomington, and Eureka is a critical access hospital located in Eureka, Illinois. We also have a hospital in Alney, Illinois, Richland Memorial, Carl Rich Memorial, and we have a hospital as well in Hoopson, which is another critical access hospital. So now we are a five-hospital system, of course, with our headquarters located right here in Urbana, Illinois. And then I think something notable is just, we now have over 600 physicians. And of course, most of those physicians, not all, but most of them do live in Champaign County, and we have over 300 advanced practice providers who are really at the helm and at the core of our care. This just, I thought you'd be interested to know how many employees we have now. So Carl Health has over 11,000 employees. And you can see here by looking at this, they're spread across our system and in various parts of the, of the services that we provide, with clearly the bulk of the employees in what I would call probably our primary service area or the service area that most of you are probably most used to, which is, you know, Champaign-Urbana, Danville, Mattoom, Charleston area, as well as Hoopson, and Rantoul, Tuscola, Mohammed. So that kind of core area clearly has the bulk of our, our team members in it. And then you can see the Health Alliance, which is the insurance company, has close to 800 employees. And then you can just look across, and of course, in Bloomington-Normal, as you would expect, has the second largest group of employees. A little bit about the College of Medicine. This is pretty exciting. This is a very unique college of medicine. It's the first engineering-based medical school in the world. And what's been interesting, you guys, this program started in 2018 with our first class of 24. So we've had two years of 24. We've had two years, one year now of 42. And we've got another year where we're going to be bringing in 42, and then we start in our fifth year of bringing in 64 students each year. So we have a graduating class that will come in 2022, because we started in 2018, so it's a four-year program. What's kind of neat about this is that 14% of these students that are coming, first of all, they're, they're all over the, from all over the world, 14% have been those that are minorities. Almost half are women. And for the most recent class that we, that entered last July in 2020 during kind of the middle of our COVID year, we had over 3,000 applications. So that is just incredible, the interest in this school. So we're so fortunate to be able to partner with University of Illinois in this, and of course, in one of the top engineering programs in the world as well. So this combination of, of basic science and combined with engineering really puts us in a unique spot in bringing all those students, you know, to the Champaign-Urbana area, living, you know, going to school, and learning to love our communities like we do. So that's a little bit about the College of Medicine. I think we've really seen such an interest in it, and it's really, I think, captivated the minds of not just our students, but also all of us who work at Carl. We're excited to be a part of it. And so they are amidst us, you know, running around and getting education. And many of our team members are involved in the education of our, of these students, as well as, of course, professors over at the University of Illinois and many of our physicians. So that's just a little bit about a nutshell of what's going on with the Carl Illinois College of Medicine. Also, let me tell you just a little bit more details about Carl Foundation Hospital, and then that'll segue right into Beth Katsinas talking about our project around the guest house. Well, we've been growing as a hospital, and of course, 2020 was an unusual year, obviously, because a lot of the, just a downturn in activity. But we have overall, in the last five years, grown significantly, and we're a 453-bed hospital. We operate, you know, probably close to about 90% full most of the time. We have had, have a very busy ED. 2020, these statistics are, are lower than what we would normally see. Our emergency department has been about a 90,000-visit ED, but we saw, of course, a downturn in 2020 just with the shutdowns that occurred. You can see that our, our birth here at 2,600, they have remained pretty steady over the past several years. NICU admissions are a big part of what we do. Surgical patients, you can see, that number is lower because we stopped elective procedures for about three months during COVID. And outpatient visits are also down. So our 2020 stats are kind of below what our 2019 stats were. And, but 2021 has picked right back up in terms of most of our services. As far as our emergency room, we continue to be a level-one trauma center. We are probably, when you, when you think about all the people that come into our emergency department, about one-third of them are admitted. So that's kind of interesting for you guys to know. The emergency department is really one of our front doors, as well as, of course, the transfers that we take from the region. But, so about one out of every three patients that comes to the ED is admitted into the hospital, either as an observation patient or a full admission. So those are just kind of a few statistics. You've got this presentation. Obviously, if there are questions that you have, certainly, you know, ramp them up, and any of us would be happy to answer them. With this growth, I think it's important for us to consider how we can additionally serve our patients and our family members. And the Carl Guest House is all about serving those families. As you might know, being a trauma center, of course, there are accidents that take place in our region, and some of our family members are, you know, hither and yon, you know, depending on where those accidents might occur. And since we are a regional referral center, of course, we have people coming to us for NICU care, for trauma care, you know, for specialty services and very unique surgeries. And for those who have difficulty, you know, driving back and forth, the Guest House is really quite a gift to them. So we want to present to you now, and I'm going to turn it over to Beth Katsinas to talk a little bit about a project that we're pretty excited about, that we believe will further enhance the services that we provide to our patients and our families. So Beth, I'm going to stop sharing, and I will turn it back over to, or I'll turn it to you to talk about the Guest House.
Thank you, Lynn. Everybody see this all right?
Yeah.
There we go. All right. So as Lynn said, my name is Beth Katsinas, and I serve as Vice President for Carl Center for Philanthropy. And we want to talk to you this evening about a project that centers around the, the future of the Carl Auxiliary Guest House. So the mission of the Guest House is really very simple. It's to provide those families who have loved ones in our critical care units to provide them with a place of respite, so that they can really stay focused on what is most important, and that's being there for, for their loved ones. The Guest House is a place that's really always been centered around philanthropy and giving. More than 18 years ago, the Carl Auxiliary made a lead gift for the home, and employees from both Carl and Health Alliance helped raise money to open the doors in 2003. Since that time, the house operates 100% on philanthropic funds. So we have support continued by the Carl Auxiliary. Our guest, our gift shop in the hospital, as well as our Carl Auxiliary resale boutique, all provide support for the Guest House. And then we have other donations from the community members and local organizations, and a lot from our, from our grateful guests, because we're committed to making sure that those families are allowed to stay at the Guest House free of charge. So just to give you a brief overview of our current home, it features 13 rooms. 10 of those are double occupancy rooms, and then three of them are four-person family suites. They all have a private bath, and they come with all the amenities that you would want to have in your room when you maybe find yourself there unexpectedly. We do serve a lot of NICU moms, and so every room is equipped with a breast pump for that mom if she needs it. We also have a common living area. We have a space that's designed for kids where they can play, large kitchen that's fully equipped, and a dining room. We also have laundry facilities, so if guests need to, to have clean clothes, they can do that right there in the Guest House. We serve a continental breakfast every day and have some additional grab-and-go food items. And someone is there 24/7 to make sure that their needs are met. We do that through some paid staff, and we absolutely couldn't do it without our volunteers. Since 2003, we have welcomed over 32,000 guests through the Guest House. And, you know, Lynn already talked about our service area. We have people coming from all directions into Carl Foundation Hospital and accessing those critical care units. And we also have people who are passing through our, our service area who find themselves in need of the hospital and their families in need of the Guest House. We serve about 1,500 paid guests a year, and we run over 80% occupancy consistently. And by industry standards, what that means is that we are running at full capacity almost all the time. And as a result of that, last year, we had to decline 287 requests for stays at the Guest House. We have a wonderful young woman named Rachel Schott who manages our Guest House, and she will tell you that there is nothing worse than having to tell a family who is already very stressed that you don't have a room for them. Our critical care units in the hospital refer families to us. That's really how they come to learn about the Guest House. Almost half, as we said, are new parents who have a child in the NICU, followed by our critical care units, and then our med-surg floors. The project that we want to talk with you about tonight is about a proposed 15-bed expansion of the Guest House. In this diagram, over here on the, on the right, is the existing structure. The addition would have this little connection area, and then it would extend down in this direction to add the additional 15 rooms. We also have a diagram of the back of the Guest House. Again, this time on the left, it's the existing structure, and to the right is the 15-bed addition. On the first floor of the new addition, we're adding seven bedrooms. All of those bedrooms will be family suites and have that four-person occupancy. We're also adding two, what we call day rooms. If someone doesn't need to spend the night, but they need a room to relax, or maybe they need a shower, they can use those facilities, and then we're adding a staff laundry. On the second floor, we will have eight of those family suites, and then a dedicated guest laundry, so that guests will have more access to those laundry facilities. And then this is the site plan that shows where it sits on the corner of Church Street and Orchard. The light blue, there is the existing structure, and the darker blue is the proposed expansion. So again, the Guest House, as I said, is always centered around philanthropy. And we will, we intend to build this addition through philanthropic gifts. We have a fundraising goal of 2.5 million for the project. We have a realized estate gift that, that we received last year, which is really what got us started talking about the expansion of the Guest House. The other two pieces that weigh really a major part in our fundraising plan are the Carl Golf Open and the Carl Employee Giving Campaign. The Carl Auxiliary is behind this project. And then we also will run community campaigns throughout our service region, talk with our grateful guests, and also local businesses. So this is our timeline, and for us to reach our goal of occupancy by the fourth quarter of 2022, you'll see that some things need to run concurrently, specifically the design, the city approvals, and the beginning of the fundraising campaign. As I just mentioned, the Golf Open and our employee giving campaigns factor heavily into our plan. Both of those kick off in the fall, and so our preparations for that need to start soon. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to share this timeline with you tonight. So these are just a few of the hundreds and hundreds of messages of gratitude that we receive from our guests, from people like Tammy, who just couldn't imagine being an hour and a half away when her husband was in the CCU. People like Hallie and Kyle. Hallie and Kyle are a young couple from Kansas, and they decided to go on a little road trip to visit family in the east. And when they were coming through Illinois, Hallie went into premature labor. They stayed with us for quite some time. They were alone and new parents and no family close by. And we really treated them like family, and we all were so happy when they were able to have their little girl home for her first Christmas in Kansas. And then from guests like Beulah, who is in her 80s, and she just couldn't make the drive every single day from Paris, and so was really grateful to have a place like the Guest House to stay. So these are the kinds of people that we have the privilege to serve each and every day. And our goal is that with this expansion, we will really be able to extend that service and not have to turn people away, or that we'll be able to meet the, the demand that we have today for, for places at the Guest House. We thank you for, for your time and attention tonight. We're, we're very excited about this project, and again, our, our ability to continue to serve the, the families of our patients. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have time for a couple of questions, and again, this will come before council with more details about the proposal, but we can entertain a question or two if you have them. Grace, and then Sharice.
I was wondering how guests were prioritized, and if you, like, how long is the average stay? Or I imagine it varies a lot, but how you prioritize guests and kind of how long stays range?
The average stay is four days. And in terms of prioritization, we really work with the medical staff in our units to help us prioritize. You know, we, we work very, very hand-in-hand with the NICU staff, and they may say, oh, you know, Shelley's baby is about to go home. She could probably go ahead and check out. And there's another family that they feel is a higher priority need. So some of the medical status is, is factored in there, and we really work with the staff to help us make those, those calls.
Thank you. Sharice?
I just wanted to know, is this expansion going to be on the current lot? That the parcel that you have, is it, or will you have to, will you be expanding onto another lot?
Nick, do you want to take that one?
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm Nick Crompton, Executive Director of Facility Planning and Construction at Carl Health. Excited to be here to present this project with Beth and Lynn tonight. I think it's a great project for the, the community and our, our visitors and patients. So yeah, to answer your question, this expansion would go over two lots, the north of the current Guest House. One is a vacant lot, one is a house.
So you've already purchased the house?
Yes, we already own the house.
And regarding the stay, where, when people stay, if there's a death, how is that handled? If I can ask.
Do you mean, are they required?
If the patient dies and family is staying, are they, do they have time to stay and make arrangements? Or how, how does that work?
Usually when the patient leaves the hospital, however they might leave, in a timely manner, we do ask them to, to check out. If family needs extra time and we have the space, we always work with the, with the family to make sure that their needs are, are being met.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you very much. If, and we'll, we'll look forward to learning more about details of the project in the coming weeks. One thing we forgot to mention is that in, in a previous live, Lynn Barnes was not, has not only been President of Carl Foundation Hospital, she was also an Urbana City Council member from 2005 to 2009, representing Ward 7, so.
Thank you, Mayor Marlin. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Look forward to talking with you guys more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Alrighty, we're going to move on to the budget presentation. Not sure if Elizabeth's going to share her screen, or is that Jason?
I am going to share my screen. Just give me one second.
While Elizabeth is bringing that up, I'll, I'll just introduce things by thanking individuals who've had a role in preparing the fiscal year 22 budget. This budget preparation starts months and months in advance, and it's the culmination of work by many people. So the presentation tonight will be our Finance, HR Director, Elizabeth Hannan, City Administrator, Carol Mitten, and myself, but many other people, including Shannon Clark, Will Kolchowski, Steve Doggett, Chris Francisco, Tamara Corbin, Don Ho, Michelle Higer, and all of our department heads, Bryant Seraphin, Chuck Laus, Lori Pearson, Tim Cowan, and Elizabeth Hannan have all played a major role in formulating the budget. And then this year, starting right after the primary elections and, and working our way forward, Carol and Elizabeth also met individually with city, incoming city council members, both the returning council members and the new council members, to get a sense of council priorities and interests and concerns. So. And interests and concerns. So, so those, all of that input is reflected in the budget that, that you'll be seeing tonight. So we are, we've been working very hard the past four years, five, the next slide please. With a goal of being able to really get our, our goals of building an equitable, healthy and resilient community underway. And I always want to start out by making sure people understand, first, we had to get our house in order. And that's where we spent a lot of our efforts over the past four years. Over the past four years, we eliminated a two and a half million dollar structural deficit. And that means when we started out four years ago, our recurring expenses were growing faster than our recurring revenues. We had to reverse that. We repaid loans for 911 services that had been taken out. We got ourselves on track to fund vehicle and, vehicle and equipment replacement fund. That's called the BRF. We established policies to restore adequate police and fire pension funding. One of the ways that. Sort of approaches to the budget in the previous years had been taken was to reduce pension funding, to cut back on BRF funding. To kind of take short-term shortcuts in order to get a balanced budget each year, and that's not sustainable. One of the most important things we've done is that rebuilt our emergency reserves. And that action over those years had, has allowed us to weather, recover from a tornado. That's always the, one of the reasons you give for needing reserves is for natural disasters. And we always use tornado as an example and lo and behold, we had a tornado. And that was followed the next year by a global pandemic and nobody saw that one coming. But the fact that we had restored funding and restored our reserves has allowed us to weather both of those disasters. Along with our normal operating expenditures without having to. Reduce services or seek tax increases this year. We also completed some long overdue plans and assessments. We completed the facilities master plan and programming needs and space needs assessment. We completed for the first time ever a citywide pavement assessment where. One of our local companies assessed the condition of every mile of pavement in the city. We have updated the stormwater master plan and that was last done in 1980. Before computers were being used for those plans. And then we have our comprehensive plan in progress. So the data that we've gathered over the past few years will now inform our capital improvement. Our capital improvement plan and our infrastructure plans. And, and functioning in our city building and city facilities. And there we go. We also made a major move to a cloud-based financial system. Again, we kind of brought the city into the 21st century. This is a much more secure system, a much more flexible system and one that allows us to create online services. Including, I'm excited about our liquor licensing is now going to be through the Munis system. This was a major undertaking requiring several years. Our finance department and every department really worked very hard to implement this. And we are, we're pleased that it's up and running. We also just finished replacing the phone system citywide. Our previous phone system dated to at least 20 to 25 years ago. I get, I get mixed, mixed numbers on that, but it certainly was a very old phone system that was no longer supported. And we are now operating in the 21st century with our phone system. We also migrated especially last year, a number of services to online. Which allowed us to keep functioning during the pandemic when most of our employees were working from home. And we'll continue to do that. It provides flexibility and much more customer service. And one of the most important things is that a number of financial policies were approved by the previous city council. Which has created the financial stability that we now have today. And that leaves us poised to really start working on the kind, addressing the challenges that face us going forward. So I appreciate the actions of the past council and look forward to. Basing many of our decisions on what we learned in the past four years. The other major focus of the last year and it continues to be. Is our response to COVID-19 and the ongoing recovery, which we are currently in this phase now. As always, our top priorities were to focus on the health and well-being of residents. We work very closely with community partners and we took our guidance from the Champagne, Urbana Public Health District. Illinois Department of Public Health, Governor Pritzker's office. And selected guidance from the federal government. And we're very much appreciated the new. The, the new leadership coming out of Washington DC. We also spent a great deal of effort supporting business recovery. By administering and awarding as much assistance as we possibly could. We also did that with, in conjunction with community partners for individual residents as well. We worked to protect the integrity of the healthcare system. By, by collaborating with partners to keep our COVID infection rate down. We, we made it a top priority to make sure that hospital beds were available to people when they needed it. And that was always from the day one, one of the top priorities. We maintained core services and again, we're now posed, poised to. Increase our investment in public infrastructure and adapt to post-pandemic life. Which is going to be different than it was pre-pandemic and I'm excited about the opportunities that that affords. Just to give you a little bit more detail during the pandemic and it continues. We, the city assisted in getting about $400,000 in direct assistance to households. And this is what came through the city of Urbana. Much of the assistance in housing and utility support and health support came through community partners. One of the largest, in, in that regard, has been the Regional Planning Commission. They recently, the past few months, received about six and a half million dollars to distribute for rental assistance. And I just learned last week from DeLito Salomayor that they're going to get another, over seven million dollars more. So there's a tremendous amount of funding coming through RPC for helping residents in Champagne County in housing needs. And that's critically important. Another very important partner is Cunningham Township. And they have taken the lead on assisting, they serve the same population that the city of Urbana does. And you've, you've heard a great deal about the, the activities there. And again, we had a very close partnership with our community partners. Going forward, the next couple of years. Oh, in terms of the business funding, it totals about three million dollars. And it's a combination of different federal and state programs, including the hospitality emergency grants. The Cures ES, that's the coronavirus urgent remediation. Emergency remediation and then the business interruption grants totaling over three million dollars. And those were funds coming into the city for us to administer, which is an enormous amount of work. And our grants management staff with Sheila Dodd and Braden and their team have just done a tremendous job. And we moved as much as possible out to the businesses for payroll protection, for PPE. For direct assistance and that will continue as well. The next couple of years, the American Rescue Plan is going to drive a lot of our budget discussions. And most of our disposable. Income. The city expects to read, receive about, at this point, our best estimate is close to 12.9 million dollars. This is one-time federal funding. It's part of a much larger 1.9 trillion dollar assistance package. So there's a tremendous amount of funding coming to a number of different organizations, including here in Champagne County. But the amount allocated for the city of Urbana to receive directly is close to 13 million dollars. This is, this is significant in that it's the first time during the entire COVID-19 crisis. That federal funds have flowed directly to the city. Most of the time, they've gone to the state for allocation. They've gone for specific purposes. But there has never been funding given to cities for specific, with one of the purposes being to help us recover lost revenue. And pay, pay back expenses that we incurred. We expect to have a very thoughtful public engagement process on the allocation of the American Rescue Plan funds. No decisions have been made on how these funds will be allocated within the city of Urbana. We have time to do this thoughtfully and with intention. We have to obligate the funds by December 31st, 2024. And last I heard, we spend them by December 31st, 2026. We're still waiting to get the final rules from the Treasury Department. The general categories that these funds can be spent on. There's five or six categories, but what our goal should be, and the goal of this program is to provide a short-term stimulus. But we really have an opportunity to also realize long-term benefit if we do this right. One of the areas that they can be spent on is to offset the city's revenue loss and to reimburse any costs related to the pandemic. And again, this is the first time we've had funds directly allocated to the city for this purpose. It's important to remember this is a one-time allocation. It's non-recurring. Any, any programs that are set up with these funds have to have a way to sustain them once these funds are spent. We expect to get six, about six million dollars in this fiscal year and a second distribution in the following fiscal year. I think it's important that we try to collaborate wherever possible with our community partners, leverage funds, work together. In the same sort of spirit of collaboration that we did during the pandemic to address the threat of COVID. We've got a incredible partnership now across the county where we can tackle some of the biggest challenges facing us. From, from gun violence, from, from housing crisis, you know, some of the big, the big challenges. We, we have an opportunity to really make a difference in, in addressing those. I believe it's important to aim for a focused and measurable impact. Which is why we also have to take time for a thoughtful approach and decision-making process. We don't know what that process is going to look like yet, but we will hope to get that set up and underway later this summer. And then with any kind of public expenditure of this magnitude, we need to be accountable for how the money is spent. And make sure we're complying with all the reporting requirements. Don't know what those guidelines are yet, but we will find out. This could very well require hiring staff to help administer these funds. And again, much of our disposable revenue is coming, is going to be focused on distributing. The American Rescue Plan funds. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the budget award that we received last year. And I, and I fully expect we will receive it again this year. It's presented by the Government Finance Officers Association. It's the distinguished budget presentation award. And it's given to financial documents that fulfill criteria in several areas. Including being a policy document, budget should be a financial plan, it should serve as a communication tool. And a guide to operations in the city. And if you meet these criteria. And you strive to meet these criteria and we were, received this award, I believe for the first time in our history last year. Is that correct, Elizabeth? Yes. And we hope to, we, we expect to again this year and we strive for that. If anybody, well, we've come a long way since our, since our budget days when we didn't have Munis. And, and I'm, I'm very proud of the document and that we have. Or that we have in front of us today. So I'm going to turn this over to Carol and she'll. Go on to the next section.
Great, thank you. So I'm, just want to begin my section with some high-level takeaways of the budget. So the first thing is, we don't have a lot of new spending that we were able to do in this budget. But for the new spending, we are able to do, as the mayor mentioned. Elizabeth and I met with each of the council members to talk about what your priorities were. And in response to that, we've focused the new spending that you'll see reflected in the budget. On equity, infrastructure, public safety and well-being. This budget maintains core services to residents. And unlike some of the budgets that we had to propose in order to close the structural budget deficit. There are no tax or fee increases being recommended here. So we're pretty, we're pretty happy about that. You know, the hard work has been done, as the mayor mentioned, to get to this place. And so this is, this is a very meaningful. Place to be because, because we're sort of holding our own at this point. And that's, that's no small feat following the, the pandemic. And then also, you know, we have very little debt. So, you know, and we have a lot of infrastructure needs. And that will give us some important funding options as we go forward. So a little bit of background on the economic and financial outlook. As everybody who's lived in this community for a minute knows, University of Illinois is an important institution in our community. And there's more than 50,000 students from around the world and 14,500 employees. And when they're not physically present, we feel their, we feel them, we feel their loss. So we're looking forward to everyone getting back and, and being part of the community. When, when we can all be together again. The, the healthcare sector, which we just heard from Carl, they employ nearly 10,000 people in Champagne County. And we have two hospitals in Urbana. And. That's, that's another important set of institutions for us. Education, healthcare, government and the private sector are, they bring thousands of workers to Urbana on a daily basis. And we're interested, really interested in hearing more. In the, you know, coming year from Carl, the folks at Carl about how to leverage this partnership that they have. With the University of Illinois and the College of Medicine and some of the investments that we expect to be made in Urbana. That are part of the DPI initiative from the university. So I think there's some even more opportunities going forward to leverage that, that particular relationship. And, you know, recovery is, is happening already, but it, it, it remains to be seen how long it's going to take. To return to previous levels and, and even what, you know, what that new normal looks like. So there is some good news. The U of I does this thing called a flash index. And they do it at the beginning of each month. So they're not using any kind of lagging indicators. It's just what they can grab on to. That's, that's real-time information. And if the flash index is above 100, then the, the economy of the state is growing. And if the, expanding, and if the flash index is below 100, then it's contracting. And so last month, it was above 100 for the first time since February of 2019. So that's a good sign for us. We've had some modest growth in our tax base. Urbana's assessments grew a little bit for the 2020 levy. Unemployment is down. It was 4, 4.9% for March. And that's, that's significantly down from what we've experienced during, during the pandemic. And as I mentioned in the earlier slide, we have very little debt. We will have, by the end of the fiscal year, we'll only have about $600,000 in general obligation debt outstanding. Which is quite rare for, for cities when the, the two city, the county and the city that I worked in. Previously, we basically were leveraged as, as highly as we could be while maintaining good financial standing. So this gives us a lot of opportunity for borrowing to, to meet some significant needs that we have going forward. So every time we talk about the budget, we talk about what it takes to, to sort of. Get ourselves to a, a state that is, that is stable over the long term. And economic development is a key to that and, and, and a key factor to that is growth. So during the last, the last year, we had 73 commercial building permits. They had an aggregate value of $41 million, which is pretty good considering the pandemic was underway then. 350 new market rate apartment and townhouse units will deliver this year. And those are in three projects. One is 200 South Vine. You'll see a couple of images of these in a minute. The Gather Project and then 1007 University Avenue, which is being called the Den on University. which is being called the Den on University. Then we also had thirty eight new single family homes started in last, in the last year. And in the last couple of years, we've also had a hundred and sixty one affordable units and six Habitat for Humanity Homes built in the city. So at least in the recent past, we've had a pretty healthy ratio of affordable housing relative to market rate housing built. And then, of course, we have the redevelopment of the Landmark Hotel, which, you know, we, we are in touch with the developers and they're moving through their branding, their branding discussions with Hilton. And we expect to get some permit applications very soon so they can start their, the work on their mechanical systems, which is the first phase that they intend to start on. So this next slide is a couple of images of some of the new, the new projects. Two hundred South Vine is there in the upper left hand corner. Gather at Lincoln and University. Two hundred South Vine is forty two townhouse units. The Gather Project has two hundred and thirty two units along with thirty one extended stay hotel rooms. And they have some ground floor retail. And then Pinewood Place is a twenty four unit project of the Housing Authority. And that's for seniors and persons with disabilities. And they've just opened up the waiting list for that project. And that should be completed soon. And we're looking for, we're expecting a high level of demand for that, for that project. So some of the highlights of the budget. First one, which we're really, really excited about and we're so happy that, that we were able to, to put some money together for this. And, and you'll see this, there, there's a, there's a change from the budget, the draft budget itself, and Elizabeth can explain that a little bit more. But we've put together two million dollars for, for what we call the Equity and Quality of Life Project. It's abbreviated EQL, or you could call it equal. And that's in direct response to what we had heard from council members looking for both infrastructure and projects that, that were investments in, in communities in parts of our city where maybe there hadn't been the same level of investment. And some of those, some of those things that we heard, well, I have a few examples on the next slide. But, you know, there, there are things that are as simple as, as streetlights and, and sidewalks where they're missing. So two million dollars, we'll be looking for the council to help set the parameters for how we will, how we will prioritize those projects because we're bound to get more requests than we have resources. But we're looking forward to, you know, making some significant impact on the communities we're able to, to, to make those investments in. Then later this evening, you will meet Carla Boyd, who is being, who has been appointed and hopefully will be approved by you all for the, to be our Human Rights and Equity Officer. We've included some additional money in this year's budget, twenty five thousand dollars, to give her some resources for some additional outreach. We have allocated thirty five thousand dollars for additional police de-escalation and crisis intervention training. This is over and above what they typically do and what they typically provide for. We're, we're, we are trying to be responsive to what we, what we heard, both from the council members and the community about making sure that our police have the highest level of training to handle these, you know, the, the problematic interactions as we, as we possibly can. And then there's a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars for the fire department spread over a variety of things. One is for just additional operational training. This will allow them to do more controlled burns where they learn a lot at IFSI, hands on training and have some folks attend the fire department instructor, instructors conference. The advanced EMT will be training for six of our firefighters to go from intermediate EMT to advanced EMT. We have a number of firefighters who are eligible for retirement and they tend to have the most advanced kind of training. So this will give us an opportunity to bring some of the younger, less experienced firefighters up to a higher level of EMT qualifications. And then, as you know, we brought on the deputy fire chief and we've allocated some additional money for, for training for him as well. So now this, this next slide is just a couple of examples of some relatively modest neighborhood infrastructure projects. The Kinch Street lighting on the left, that was done, that was completed last year after, after sort of being carried on the books without a, a budget for, for years. And, and last year, we, it was funded, I think, almost exclusively from CDBG money. But that's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project that I think installed eleven or twelve streetlights along Kinch Street. And it's made a huge difference. People had asked for it, you know, a couple of decades ago. So it's been a long time coming and, and that's why we think it's so important to, to allocate some money for the, the equity and quality of life projects because it really does impact, you know, people in their day to day. And then on the right hand side is a, is a, a project that was done several years ago. It's a mixed use, mixed use, multi-use bath. And it, it connects two streets that, that were, there was a missing connection. And this facilitates people being able to get down to Florida Avenue. You'll see it, it has both the, the path itself and then it has solar powered lighting. Some of the other budget highlights, we have been able to fund some limited term positions. So as you might know, the Lily Wilcock is a planner in CD, but she has been assigned to work on the comp plan. So we need another planner to backfill her spot for a couple of years. We have a building inspector slot. We have, we're fully staffed with building inspectors right now. But we are trying to cross train the building inspectors so that they can fill in for each other and that we can sort of flex our staff as needed. So this interim limited term position will allow our, our existing staff to get additional training and, and help carry the workload in, in, while they're in training. We have a business analyst in the IT department who helps implement. She's kind of becomes a specialist in, in some of our, some of the software that we use so that she can help maximize the benefit that we get out of those software investments. And so we're, we're bringing that, that position forward for another year. And then the Computer Tech Apprentice is a, is a program from Parkland. And for a relatively modest investment on our part, the, the apprentice gets real life experience and we get a, we get an employee at a reduced cost, which we sorely need right now in IT. And then we have a number of technology improvements in the amount of forty two thousand dollars. And the password manager, the encrypted email and the privileged account management, our further investments on our part to enhance the security of our network. Any of you who have started using your city email will probably get pinged with some of the security, the phishing emails that, that our staff sends so that, that we, we try to become proficient and not, and not compromise the network by our own actions. But there's, there's many things that Sanford has, our IT manager has, has implemented over the last couple of years that we've invested in to, to help make us less vulnerable to security threats. And that's been really important. And then finally, there's some additional software licenses in CD that will allow us to continue to convert to online activities that the mayor mentioned that have been really beneficial for our staff and the community to be able to, to access our services twenty four seven. Then finally, this last slide that I, that I have on public infrastructure, I just want to say, well, you'll hear more on June seventh about the capital improvement plan. But just a few highlights of what you can expect. The mayor had mentioned that we've done master plans and condition assessments, many for the, the first time in, in decades. And the information that is in those plans and assessments is guiding the priorities. And that's very important when you have limited resources. The, we think the, the equal project will provide resources for underserved areas, for discrete projects. We're beginning the implementation of the facilities master plan in earnest. And then a few of the more significant street projects that have been in the, in the works for a number of years that you'll hear more about on June seventh are the Lincoln and Springfield resurfacing and sidewalk reconstruction. Fair Lawn Avenue reconstruction from Vine to Anderson. That's a very worn out section of Fair Lawn Avenue and it's a bus route. So it gets a lot of wear and tear. Race Street will be resurfaced from Washington to California. And then Windsor Road will be reconstructed from Race to Wright Street. And now I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth and there's, she will share her ever popular charts and graphs with you.
I'll try not to dazzle you too much. So, so one thing I want to mention, and Carol referred to this earlier when she talked about the Equity and Quality of Life Project. That this is a draft document. So you will be getting edits with the final budget ordinance. And that, and that is one of those, those edits or corrections that, that we will give you. There was a million dollars classified as a recurring expense for services, which really should have been in the equal project. So for that reason, some of these charts and graphs are going to be a little bit different than what you see, than what you see in the budget book. So first, we're going to look at all city funds combined. And I'm going to take a little time to explain this and a couple of other points since we have a number of new council members. When we look at all funds combined, we exclude inter-fund transfers so that we're not counting the same money twice. So you might notice that some of the figures you see here in the all funds combined for the general fund portion would be a little bit less than what you'll see when we look at the general fund alone. So as an example, we plan to transfer two point eight million from the general fund to the capital improvement fund in the FY twenty two budget. That will actually be spent in the capital improvement fund. If we did not exclude that transfer, it would actually be counted twice. Once as an expense in the general fund for the transfer and again, as an expense in the capital improvement fund. So that's why we do that. So this chart shows revenues for all funds. Fifty three point four million for FY twenty two. And that's, you might notice that's less than, than the sixty point seven million for, that we're estimating for FY twenty one. And that decrease is specifically due to a significant amount of one time revenue that we received in FY twenty twenty one, including that first portion, sorry, of the American Rescue Plan Funds and other grants and also delayed property tax disbursements. So we anticipated seeing the first half of the ARP funds in FY twenty one. We didn't budget the second half in FY twenty two because at that point we were not clear about timing. You may also see that as an adjustment when you get the budget ordinance. So as you can see, the majority of our revenue is in the general fund. That's about sixty four percent of the total. And we'll talk more about general fund in just a few minutes. I'm also going to point out that since we've been talking about the American Rescue Plan Funds, we actually created a new fund in the budget specifically for that purpose. And you can see that on page one eighty two in your proposed budget book. So what, one of the things we tend to get a lot of questions about is property taxes and, and where people's property tax revenue goes. So I'm going to touch on that very briefly. So this pie represents the whole amount of property tax that a typical Urbana resident or homeowner would pay. And as you can see here, the, the piece of the pie that goes to the city is just thirteen percent of the total. In fact, the, the majority, fifty five percent goes to the school district. And then if you further break down the city's thirteen percent of the total, it's about five percent goes to the library. That's the largest share of our property tax levy, followed by pensions. And then the smallest portion actually, actually goes into the general fund to pay for basic city services. So just, just probably useful to know. So then looking at all city funds again, excluding transfers by department. This green portion here on the chart at forty one point two percent is Public Works. And that's the largest, largest portion here. So that includes all of our funds to operate the Public Works Department and also all of our capital improvements. That's followed by police at a little bit less than nineteen percent. And then fire at about fourteen point four and community development at a little bit less than twelve percent. There's also a smaller piece up here that's a little under five percent that's called general services. And that is for expenses that are not easily attributed to a specific department. So for example, expenditures in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, which we commonly refer to as the VERF and also the retained risk fund, which pays for liability and workers' compensation claims. And then we can also look at expenditures for all funds by classification of expenditure. So you can see here, this purple portion is capital spending. So you can see that here in FY twenty one and in FY twenty two, there's a, those are relatively big years for capital spending compared to the previous two years. Total expenditures are at fifty eight point seven million. And of that, more than, a little bit more than half, about fifty one percent is for personnel. So normally, we would expect our personnel expenses to increase kind of gradually over time. Instead, on this chart, there's a little bit of a bump here in FY twenty one and then it's, it looks fairly stable. Again, this, this goes back to delayed property tax payments from the county. And a large portion of those property tax receipts are received into the general fund and then immediately paid out to the police and fire pension funds. And so since the revenues were delayed, those expenditures were also delayed. And that's the biggest part of that, that bump you see there. Otherwise, it would be a little more gradual. At the same time, as the mayor mentioned, we've also been making progress on our funding plan to increase police and fire pension funding. So that's also been ramping up. So then we'll focus on the general fund. And again, on, on this chart, we will include inter-fund transfers. So total general fund revenues, thirty seven million. This purple piece of the pie here is all of our sales and use tax revenue. And that's thirty two percent, just under a third of all of our general fund revenue. That's, that's been the biggest piece of the pie for us for a long time and it probably will remain that way into the future. That is followed by property tax and income tax, each of those around thirteen percent. But again, we don't, all of that thirteen percent doesn't stay in the general fund to pay for city services. Most of it goes out to pensions. And then we can look at general fund expenditures by classification. So the, in this chart, the green is personnel expenditures. And that's almost seventy percent of the budget, which, if you think about it, makes sense. Most of our personnel are budgeted in the general fund. And it's people that make, make things happen, that provide the services that our residents depend upon. And you can, you can see also on this chart that impact of the irregular property tax and payments to the pension funds. So now we're going to dig a little bit into the financial policies and how those relate to the budget. So there's really two primary indicators of fiscal health that we focus on when we're developing the budget. And those are the balance between recurring revenue and expenditures and also fund balance as a percentage of our And also fund balance as a percentage of our recurring expenditures. You're going to see this over and over during your time on the city council. So we'll talk about this when we talk about the budget. We'll talk about it at times when we discuss the financial policies. We'll talk about it when we look at the financial forecast. So the guidelines we use for these metrics are included in the city's financial policies. And those are approved by the city council and periodically updated. You will find those policies beginning at page fifteen of the budget book. This particular chart evaluates that relationship between recurring revenue and expenditures. And over here on the right side in green, we have recurring revenues and in purple, we have recurring expenditures. So in this example, for the FY22 proposed budget, recurring expenditures are ninety eight point two four percent of recurring revenues. And that is within our policy guideline of ninety eight point five percent. That guideline is important because it ensures that we can maintain a stable budget even when we have revenue fluctuations. That allows us to consistently provide services to our residents even when we're experiencing a downturn as we have this year. And then this, this, this slide is probably the one I'm going to spend the most time on. We're getting, we're getting close to the end. So this chart illustrates, illustrates the relationship between fund balance and recurring expenditures, which is also included in the financial policies. As the mayor mentioned, fund balance in the general fund is essentially our emergency reserve. It allows us to provide, predictably provide services. And if we ever do have to make cuts, it gives us the time to be thoughtful about how we do that. A strong fund balance is also an important, can, of, an important portion of fiscal condition assessments that may be made by others, including bond rating agencies. And as you may know, a strong bond rating would benefit the city by enable us, enabling us to obtain lower interest rates. So our current fund balance policy is twenty percent of recurring expenditures. And in this budget, the fund balance is twenty five point seven one percent. The white line on the chart here is the twenty percent level. So again, that healthy level of reserves allowed us to weather the pandemic without ma, without making budget reductions. The Government Finance Officers Association provides very detailed guidance on evaluating risk to establish an appropriate fund balance goal. And I actually reviewed that analysis with the last council back in March, so fourteen, fourteen months ago or so. Um, and based on that analysis, the, the mayor and staff recommended that we increase the fund balance target to twenty five percent of recurring expenditures when we're able to do that. That would be equivalent to about three months of expenditures. That's not really unusual for smaller cities. Um, just as an example, the city of DeKalb has a policy of maintaining a twenty five percent fund balance. Uh, Wheaton has a policy of maintaining a forty percent fund balance. You'll find some that are lower and you will find some that are higher. So factors that, that are part of that evaluation include the probability of extreme events. So natural disasters such as a tornado. The stability of revenues, including reliance on inherently less stable revenues such as sales tax. And as you saw on an earlier chart, about a third of our general fund revenue comes from sales tax. And specifically in Illinois, there's, there's a, a risk that's a little bit unique to local governments in Illinois, which is we know that the state um, has this enormous pension liability that they're simply not dealing with. And in the past, when they've needed to balance their budget, they have diverted local government revenues to do that. So that's another risk that's out there for us. Um. You know, we, we also look at reliance of other funds on the general fund as a source of funds. So for example, we use the general fund as a source of funds for cap, for capital improvements. And we use it as a source, as a source of funds for retained risk reserves. Having a healthy fund balance also provides cash flow and generates investment income. So again, we've discussed this previous, previously with the last council, um, most recently in March, twenty twenty. With this, with this budget, we are able to comfortably achieve that twenty five percent goal. And the mayor will recommend revising that policy. You'll likely see that recommendation sometime later in the summer. Fund balance is also projected to be relatively high at the end of the current year, but that's partly about timing of revenues and expenditures. And, and as you can see, then that's being spent down in the, in the budget year. So the green line on the chart here shows that twenty, twenty five percent level where we, we'd really like to be. So enough numbers. Um, looking ahead, um, in the long term with a full recovery, we expect to be in healthy financial condition. We're going to continue to really closely monitor revenues that are affected by the recession. And you, you will notice, we're working on a court of the report now, you'll notice that there'll be a specific section dedicated to that. Every year we do a financial forecast and we will update that in the fall. And so we'll have, you know, even a better sense of kind of how things are progressing with the recovery. And that will set the tone for the FY2023 budget that you'll be seeing a year from now. In the shorter term, um, in terms of budget review, on June 7th, the library director will be here to discuss the library budget. Her budget information is included in our budget book, but technically that's approved by the library board. On that same night, you will talk about the capital improvement plan. On June 14th, we'll have an opportunity um, for review of additional um, topics. On June twenty four, twenty first, we'll bring the budget ordinance and a budget amendment to the committee of the whole for review. And then that would be forwarded to council for approval of a budget ordinance on June 28th. We are required by law to adopt the budget prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year. So that's the budget in a nutshell. I think we'd be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Uh, Sharice and then Jaya.
Um, Elizabeth, when, if that um, that, the infrastructure budget passes from Congress, uh, if that gets approved, will those, will funds for infrastructure uh, like coming to Illinois, will that be a, a block grant given to the state? Do you know, or will it, will it go uh, to specific cities? How, do you have any idea how that would work? And if we get those funds, do they go in the general fund or how, how does that work?
So, so the answer is I, I don't, I don't know all of the details at this point. Um, we do, we do not pay for capital expenses from the general fund. So if we get those funds, they likely go directly into the capital improvement fund.
Okay. And um, well, um, I guess the other question I, I have to ask because I know that, that particular bill that's being held up right now also includes like um, internet uh, and that kind of thing. Well, well, is that considered a capital improvement to try to provide uh, how, how certain, you know, under, uh, at-risk people with internet? Is that anything that we could do with, with that or how would that work? Do you know?
Yeah, I mean, potentially we could do something. Again, I don't know the specific limitations. I know in the American Rescue Plan funding broadband infrastructure is a permitted expense. Um, and, and so there may be, there may be more than one opportunity to address some things. So there are some things that could be funded from American Rescue Plan funds, but we, we may also want to look at other um, options that are coming through the federal government.
Okay. Thank you.
American Rescue Plan funds um, focus on infrastructure specifically related to broadband, to clean drinking water and to um, storm water and wastewater. So that's the infrastructure areas that the ARP funds can be used on.
Okay.
Um, I think Jaya had questions?
It did. Um, so I see in the introduction, there's a, a statement reflecting the city council's commitment to ending structural racism. And I was wondering if there are specific areas that you're seeing funding put towards those efforts?
Um, in several areas. One is, um, you may have noticed we are, we increased funding for the Human Rights and Equity Office to, from a part-time position to a full-time position. So that's a change from what's been the case in pre, several years prior. And that position becomes very important in um, implementing the council goals related to systemic racism and equity. Um, and also looking at housing, employment discrimination. And then we'll be looking at the um, you know, review of the civilian police review board and the ordinance that created it as well as our human rights ordinance. So there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of tasks that, that we wanted to get to and that's one of the areas they'll focus on. We're also um, um, putting in or allocating the equivalent of one full-time police officer toward the new emergency response, co-responder, response model. And that's, that's a, an allocation of those resources and um, and then anything related to our equal equity and quality of life capital improvements is related to the structural inequities that have occurred in infrastructure construction over the year. And that is also what we were, is reflected in the um, grant that we received for tree planting. So when you look around town and, you know, a lot of the inequities in the community and in the neighborhoods are related to infrastructure and the amenities and the connectivity and the shade trees and sidewalks and things that some of us take for granted in certain neighborhoods and other neighborhoods don't have at all. As, as this community was built out in different decades and different eras and different parts of the city, it was built really unequally as far as access to some of these basics. And, and I have to say, one of the reasons I'm so excited about this um, equal two million dollars for the neighborhood-based infrastructure projects is that um, I saw firsthand the impact that these smaller scale projects can have, what a big impact these smaller scale projects can have. The um, the street lighting on Kinch, there was another intersection over in the Lerman neighborhood. Where a lot of us worked a lot, getting the community garden built and then just working with the Lerman Neighborhood Action Committee. And there was one intersection where the neighbors wanted a street light. It was very dark and they really wanted the safety of a street light. And, and the city installed one street light at the corner of Hunter and Austin. And we held a ribbon cutting for the one street light. It made a tremendous difference um, to the neighborhood. Same thing with that Lenore Adams path. It was a one-block-long pathway that connected two different neighborhoods. But what it meant was it gave direct access for the Lerman neighborhood folks to the Florida Avenue, to the businesses and services on um, in, in, in the Sunny Crest area and on Philo Road. And that was, you know, we were seeing people cut a hole in the fence by, in Aspen Court to get through directly to Philo Road. So, so that just illustrated to me how, how strategic um, intentional investments in areas that are lacking in what I would consider basic infrastructure are very important. And um, that through, the, the, the equal money is in addition to the American Rescue Plan funding. That's one thing I wanted to make sure people understood. Those are two, two separate pots of money. But we have an opportunity to really start to address the um, inequities in infrastructure that really, that, that create inequities in neighborhoods and quality of life and, and its health and safety as well. Uh, Grace.
And James also, if you're looking for the fake. Um, I had three questions. I think they're um, relatively fast. Um, I was wondering um, on the budget, Elizabeth or whomever, with twenty twenty one, there's a columns for actual budget and estimate. And I was wondering if you could um, define those, please? Like what is twenty twenty one actual, twenty twenty one budget, twenty twenty one estimate?
Right. So the, I want to take a look at that. Oh, so the twenty twenty one actual would be what our actual revenue or spending was at the point in time that we ran this report, which these, these were run, I want to say, early last week, right? So that's, that's as current as, as it can be. The twenty twenty one budget is the current budget. So that is the adopted budget plus or minus any amendments that happened during the year. And then the twenty twenty one estimate is our essentially reevaluation of where we think we will end the year. And in fact, when, when we bring you the budget ordinance, we will also bring you a budget amendment. As a matter of reconciling that estimate to the budget, we actually amend the budget to match the estimate before the year ends.
Um, I was wondering, a question too, what are the services classification in the general fund?
So that would be, that would be something where we contract with somebody for, uh, I'll, I'll throw out a couple of examples. One of those things would be the money we pay our auditors to come and do our annual audit. It would also be if we use professional engineering in, in public works to, you know, design an infrastructure project. And anything where we're, where we're paying a vendor um, to perform a service for the city really falls under that.
Thank you. And then last question for now was, um, I was wondering about, um, you mentioned affordable housing, maybe in Carol's piece um, with the hundred and sixty one affordable housing units. And I was wondering if that was all at Pinewood Place through HUD or if there were any of these public properties that were considered affordable housing? Um, and if so, what, what is that criteria?
There, there's two projects that, that went into the hun, one hundred and sixty one affordable units. Pinewood Place is twenty four of those units. And then Aspen Court is one hundred and thirty seven of those units. And that was completed about a year ago.
That was actually a five point two million dollar renovation.
And that's through HUD or is that?
It was a public, it was a private, um, the city assisted in getting tax credits um, with, for TWG out of Indianapolis.
Do you know what's considered affordable housing?
I could ask Sheila Dodd who's on the call.
I'm not sure if she is actively right there. Okay. That, that's something we can look at specifically, depending on their funding level. Uh, we can look at what is defined as affordable for that particular project. It's, it's not an across-the-board number. So we can get that.
Um, James and then back to Jaya.
Right. I've got a couple of questions. The first one, um, the, the Windsor Road reconstruction between Wright Street and Race Street, is that part of the, the road that has the defective concrete?
No, it's not.
And i- is that on the list because of our scoring software as far as uh, pavement that needs to be replaced?
It's a combination of that and the, and um, the, the level, the volume of traffic that it carries. So it's not just the numbers. It's, it's also factoring in, you know, whether it's an arterial and, and so forth.
Okay. I'm, I'm just asking because I, I drive that like all the time. And, and there are other roads that I, it feels to me might be a priority as to condition, but I understand the volume because I see that as well. Um, and I have another question, uh, actually two questions that I want to just make sure I understand some things. Uh, this is page uh, Roman numeral seven, BII. I'm looking at the two charts at the top of the page. Um, for the I guess the I'm looking at forty one, the intergovernmental revenues, the spike in fiscal year twenty one, that is COVID, COVID monies?
Um, shoot, I feel like I'm forgetting. Shoot, I feel like I'm forgetting something. So some, some of that is COVID money, some of that is, there was something really big in there and it's slipping my mind. But let me, let, let, let me get back.
Yeah, cause it stands out as different. I, I can understand that some of that would be the, the COVID relief kind of funding, but I was just curious about that. And then the other numbers that I was trying to make sure I understood, 53, the capital outlay, which really jumped up in fiscal year 21 and continues relatively high fiscal year 22. Is that the construct, like the road construction projects? That's the majority of what's in there?
Um, you know, it's, it's road construction, it's storm sewers, it's sidewalks, it's streetlights. It's, it's all of, all of that. So, yeah, the, the detail on that is in the capital improvement plan. And there's actually in the back of the budget book, under the supplemental information, there's actually a listing of all the projects that touch that, that are, that have capital spending. It starts.
So if I was looking at fiscal year 19, pre-COVID year, would, would that have been a higher number? Or is, is fiscal year 20 depressed relative to what normally happens? Or are fiscal year 21 and 22 representative of more capital being available to?
When it, when it comes to spending on capital projects, there's kind of no normal year, right?
Okay.
So oftentimes what'll happen is we'll set aside money for years to pay for a big project. So like for example, the Empor project, you know, we set aside money for a long time. There might've been very little spending and then all of a sudden we had a blip, kind of a big blip in capital spending. So it's, 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 it's not something that's by its nature is predictable from year to year. And you're going to see that, you know, during your time on the council, capital spending will be, you know, relatively low one year and much higher another year.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and the other, the other piece of the, the big thing in the revenue side in FY21 was American Rescue Plan. But we anticipated receiving the first half of this month.
Thanks, Jaya.
Yeah, so I had a question with the increase in staffing. Is there going to be staff available to support the work of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, especially around realizing Vision Zero?
We're not allocating additional staff for that, no. And, and I, I would just perhaps for the new council members, when the council approved the Vision Zero plan, it was understood and it was included in the, in the resolution from the council. It was, it was a change from the resolution that came from BPAC that, that the, the effort would be undertaken by BPAC itself. It would not be a separate task force. And there was a recognition that we had limited, that we had limited staff.
Chandra.
Quick question about the Human Rights and Equity Office. So you said that there was, there was money for obviously the position. Does that also include money for implementing all of these activities? Or is it just? I, I assume it's, it's more than just the salary, correct? It's, it's for all the things that they'll be doing, right? Outreach and, you know?
The salary, the salary had already been increased to a full-time. And I think it was in, in the current fiscal year's budget. And so the, the additional money that I mentioned, the $25,000 is an additional allocation of funds to help implement the, the various things that you heard the mayor talk about.
And there's also $5,000, I believe, for training for the new Human Rights and Equity Officer.
So is that a, a one-person sort of department?
It's two, it's two persons, two peoples, two people. It's, it's the Human Rights and Equity Officer and the Community Outreach Coordinator.
Okay.
Community Engagement Coordinator.
And the budget for that, that team is on page 56 in the budget book.
Thank you. I was looking for it. I was just saying I wish people even had a control fine and you can.
Sharice and then Grace.
The kind of piggyback on what Chandra asked, will, will those positions at all have any kind of admin person to help them complete their task? Like, you know, the secretary or temp or somebody there to, to assist?
They don't have a separate admin, but we, but we all get supported by, you know, there's, there's several admin in exec. And so things like, you know, submitting invoices, you know, there's assistance with that. But e- each different section doesn't have its own admin.
Okay, so their, their support staff will be shared with the, with general support staff in the building?
No, with in, in exec. So, you know, the mayor and I share an admin. There's an admin in legal. We, we all just kind of help each other out. And, you know, with, with all the modern technology, we're pretty independent, making our own, setting up our own meetings. And, you know, if people need help with, you know, an event or something, you know, we pitch in.
Okay.
Grace.
Thank you. Another question about the estimate for 21 and how that was based? And if it's applied consistently? Cause it seems like there were certain items and like certain salaries in particular, where the actual, where the estimate was much greater than the actual or the budgeted compared to others. And you think like salary would be a pretty consistent thing that, you know, we haven't got through the full year yet. So you, you know, imagine that it'd be, you know, 10 out of 12 months paid already. And it seems like some jump up a lot more in the estimate than others.
Yeah, so, so generally the default for that estimated number is that it's the same as the budget. If it's, if it's different, it's because somebody took a look at it and determined there was a reason to make it different. But if there are specific ones you have questions about, I can look and, you know, get the explanation. I, I, I don't think I can do it like while we're here in the meeting, but if you want to email me, I can do that.
Yeah, I would just mention, I'm, I'm looking at page 71, particularly police administration. Police criminal investigation, things like that estimate is much higher than the actual and exceeding the budget. And a lot of the other departments didn't have that, it looks like. Yeah, I'd appreciate that information. Thank you.
Mary Alice.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I missed it. Is there going to be a copy of this available for the public to view at the library?
There is a copy at the library. I dropped it off myself on Thursday or Friday afternoon. There's also a copy in the city clerk's office. And there's also a copy online on the finance department webpage under financial reports and annual budget.
Okay, thank you. And again, if, if council has questions, specific questions, please send them in and we'll collect them and then address them as we, as we go into more detail in the coming weeks on, on various parts of the, on parts of the budget. Is that Grace?
Yeah, the last, last quick one. I'm sorry if we mentioned it, but do we have the public hearing for budget stuff scheduled already?
Um, yes, we ran the ad in last Sunday's paper and I believe it's on June 7th.
And that will be the next, that will be the, before the committee of the whole meeting, which is the next time we'll meet. We don't meet next week. It's the fifth Monday. Okay. Alrighty, thank you. Thank you all. We'll now move on to public input. Let me switch gears here. First up, Danielle Chinoweth.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Hello, good evening. My name is Danielle Chinoweth and I serve as the Cunningham Township Supervisor. Our mission is to support low-income residents in Urbana. Last Monday, there were a few people who spoke before the city council about township business. Although residents are welcome to speak honestly before any public body about anything they wish to, I just wanted to hop on the city council meeting tonight to care, clarify a few things. First, the city and the township are separate, independent units of government. We have different structures at meetings. But I also wanted to provide, since our next town board meeting is in a month, I wanted to provide an update on the property it's recently acquired by township. So that just because there's been some questions about the process and status. So on May 7th, as you all know, township closed on the purchase of two properties. The total eight units, their intended use is as emergency housing for families with children and disabled residents who are unable to stay in shelter. We did so to ensure this current program's sustainability past COVID-19, as well as to support the health and wellbeing of families in our program. Our program is currently operated in a hotel. The purchase was authorized at the board, first at a special meeting April 5th, then the April 12th town board meeting. We had a discussion and closed session, which is typical and permissible when acquiring property. And then it was followed by public votes in open session. The property was purchased with all local township funds, no state or federal funds were used. The properties were marketed by the seller unfortunately as having no lease renewals past July 31st, which is part of what made the properties desirable. But when we did view the leases in the process, we discovered two of eight units were leased until 2022. That said, we did not consider this a problem as our program typically has no more than six families and there were eight units. So the, several days after the binding contract of sale was signed, we were contacted by the CU tenant union about one residence without assigned lease who wished to stay. When it did the walkthrough, this was the day before closing, we discovered another resident without assigned lease to wish to stay. So in light of this, we reached out to CU tenant union to talk about how we could craft and offer the tenants to help support this situation. We posted that offer within hours of us closing on the property. We were asked by the seller not to speak to the tenants before he and the letter let them know we are flexible about move-out dates. Some have leases ending May 31st, some July, excuse me, end of June, June and some end of July. In that letter, we offered a $2,000 cash incentive to support their moving out by August 15th, which is about three months later, a little bit more than three months. In the letter, we also say we will allow the two households with lease renewals the option to get out of their lease and take the incentive. That's their choice. Please note that the May 7th letter does not mandate a move-out date, only an incentive date. Even after the incentive date is over, residents who income qualify could be eligible for our other programs. We run in rental assistance and other programs. So last week, we called and/or posted letters to every tenant store, asking again to connect and offer support locating housing and discussing any needs. I just want to reiterate in closing that we're committed to working individually with each tenant on a plan. And as long as the tenant works with our housing advocate to obtain, actively obtain housing, we can be flexible on move-out dates. We can help locate suitable housing, apply for subsidized housing. We can offer prorated rent if a tenant leaves before the end of the month. We can pay the new landlord and movers directly, so they don't need to pay out of pocket and wait to get reimbursed. We are really willing to entertain any reasonable request to make this transition as supported as possible. And I would just ask that, you know, all questions and concerns that you may receive, if you could please redirect them to me since as supervisor, I have township supervisor, I have jurisdiction over the general assistance programs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up is Albert Lamb.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Hi, everybody. My name's Albert Lamb. I'm a graduate student in the physics department at the U of I. I'm also a resident of Urbana and have lived at 208 East California Avenue for just shy of two years now. So as you know, recently the apartment buildings located at 208 and 206 East California Avenue were sold to Cunningham Township. So my lease ends in July and Cunningham Township has not given me the option to renew. I've spent the last two weeks searching for housing and have not been able to find a place that is both affordable and within a reasonable distance to campus. In this town, since it's a college town, places rent out earlier in the year. And at that time, I had no idea that I needed to spend time searching for housing for the next school year. The places that are left include the luxury high-rises in Champaign, which are simply not affordable to a student like me. Actually, I don't even qualify for those places because it seems like every place now is requiring, requiring proof of rent, proof of monthly income, that is at least three to four times the cost of rent. I'm really busy with my program and I had not planned on having to search for housing and on moving. To do so right now would be extremely disruptive to my studies. I understand that Cunningham Township has a noble cause of assisting low-income residents in need, but it doesn't make sense to me when they are doing this at the cost of making life harder for other low-income residents like students like myself. It also doesn't seem fair that two other residents were able to renew their leases when others like me were not given the option. I think it's reasonable to allow all current residents to renew their leases, at least for the next year. That way, this will give us a chance to prepare and to be able to search for housing during the next cycle. Thank you for listening and for your understanding.
Thank you. Next up is Tracy Chang.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chang. Regarding Jaya's question, I'm doubtful that the amounts of money like the $25,000 for the HRE or training will improve equity and racism if the city's actions does not change. I would suggest that before any money is thrown at solving problems, the city take a look at its own actions. For example, after the job discrimination hearing, you can see how Carroll, City Administrator Carroll Mitten basically vetoed the board's decision. Or at one of the recent CPRB meetings where Carroll Mitten did not allow members to vote again for the TASER review case, even though nearly all of the evidence was suppressed by UPD during the original review. So it's free to change this mindset and stop these kinds of actions. And that alone would be a, a big first step towards improving equity and racism. So it's also been proposed that $35,000 of the coming fiscal year's budget will be allocated to additional training in the police, for the police department related to de-escalation and crisis intervention strategies. So will this work? Is this for more training from the Police Training Institute led by Michael Schlosser? As history has shown us, training at the PTI does not seem effective. According to Mr. Schlosser, in a presentation and discussion, he claimed with pride how he trains at, at the Police Training Institute and describes how impressed others are with the training. When discussing the police excessive use of force and police violence, he even goes and says that, oh, it isn't happening. he even goes and says that, "Oh, it isn't happening in our town here because our trainees are so well-trained and know how to de-escalate and respond accordingly." The reality is, we've seen incidents where not only excessive force is used without any effort of this de-escalation, but where dangerous misconduct by police officers have been documented. We've seen police leadership like Deputy Chief Salt lie to CPRB to suppress evidence. We've seen police officers use racist and sexist language. We've seen Lieutenant Koka, a police officer mocking a member of the public for being concerned. We've seen police officers lie on the use of false reports. We've seen police officers not follow reporting as required by the ordinance. All these incidents have been documented and even discussed, and in rare occurrences, even admitted by UPD. However, we have not seen accountability for this misconduct. I don't think throwing more money for training, especially if the training is going back to the PTI, where the leadership like Mr. Schlosser is either so out of touch, refuses to see the truth, or is just playing up, lying to promote the good image of the police. What we need is accountability. Why is this not happening? Please don't simplify this problem to what City Administrator Carroll Mitten just said, that the public has been calling for the highest level of training. The public is also calling for accountability. Just throwing money, $35,000 of taxpayer dollars at training is not going to help if there are no consequences to misconduct and if the existing system just allows misconduct to be explained away. We know and we have seen how UPD have failed to find wrongdoing in their own internal investigations. One would then think that having a civilian police review board would be the check and balance needed. However, it seems like Mayor Malin has been denying candidates who have been actively involved in policing issues. The very people who are able to be advocates for civilians because they can be critical of the police conduct and dare to call it out. We do not need CPR members, CPRB members, who just want to play nice with the police department and seem very eager to put themselves in the head of officers to justify their illegal actions and misconduct. Even to the point of saying that there's no misconduct when we see an officer running around carrying two weapons at the same time. And even when the deputy chief says that things like that are not supposed to happen, not supposed to happen. This is exactly what erodes all public trust in the civilian police review process and trust in the police. No matter how much money you throw, $35,000, $25,000, this is not going to change if you don't change the core issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Fran Rigberg.
Hello, hi. My name is Fran Rigberg. I have lived in Urbana since 1977. I've been on the Human Relations Commission since 2008 and I currently serve as its chair. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the council's approval of the appointment of Carla Boyd as our new human rights and equity officer. I was one of those who interviewed Carla and I strongly support her appointment. Carla has many qualities that make her an excellent choice, but one of these qualities really stood out for me. In our work, the Human Rights Office, the officer, the commission and staff not only work with community members who have been or might have experienced discrimination, but those community members who do or might perpetrate it, tolerate it, or defend it. Carla has the ability and willingness to communicate with people who may be uninformed, misinformed, misguided, fearful, or even hostile when it comes to eliminating and correcting acts or practices of unlawful discrimination. Carla is willing and skilled at meeting such a person where they are and working from there to a solution consistent with enlightened values. Usually, someone who unlawfully discriminates does so consciously or otherwise because they lump a person into a group that they think has undesirable characteristics rather than evaluating the individual. Eliminating acts based on such prejudices is the heart and soul of the Urbana Human Rights Ordinance. Carla wants to and knows how to find what it is in a given person that informs their discriminatory actions and to work from there to correct the unlawful behavior. I think this quality is invaluable in the role she will play. She is also honest, committed, experienced in working with the underserved, flexible in her thinking, motivated to keep learning, and invested in our community. I highly recommend that you approve her appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Next up is Alan Max Axelrod. Are you there, Alan? Alan? Something seemed to be responding. We'll come back in a minute to him. Brandy McCoy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Brandy McCoy. I'm an Urbana resident. Today, I'm going to read a letter that is addressed to state legislators that was drafted by the Lift the Band Coalition and which will be emailed to each council member for the opportunity to add your names to sign on before it is sent to said legislators. And the letter reads, "To our fellow elected representatives in the House, Illinois House of Representatives, we, the undersigned elected officials, are urging you to use your power to pass HV116, the bill that would remove the Rent Control Preemption Act. This act has proven to be crippling when it comes to the ability of local jurisdictions to examine and discuss possible solutions to the extreme housing crisis that our constituents are facing, including but not limited to the area of rent regulation. The Illinois Court of Appeals ruling on April 30th in the case of Rivera v. Bank of New York Mellon serves to highlight the extremely dangerous nature of the Rent Control Preemption Act. In that decision, the court overturned the 2013 Keep Chicago Renting Ordinance, citing the Rent Control Preemption Act as the basis for their decision. This ordinance, which had been law for almost a decade, was a successful attempt by Chicago City Council to help residents who lived in foreclosed properties. It was enacted as a response to the foreclosure and housing crises that resulted from the financial crisis and real estate crash of 2008 to 2009. It is now painfully clear that the Rent Control Preemption Act, an invention of Alec, is a serious and dangerous threat to the progress that has been made to promote stable and affordable housing. The blanket nature of the act can be used to justify the reversal of many more housing, property, and tax laws that currently enable local jurisdictions to address the pressing issues that Illinois residents are facing. The pandemic has severely exacerbated the historic inequities and economic hardships that our communities were already facing. And it's more urgent than ever that we overturn the Rent Control Preemption Act. If we do not, we are putting essential laws that promote stable housing at risk and preventing the creation of new legislation designed to help solve the crises that our state is facing. We urge you to pass HV116 to overturn the Rent Control Preemption Act. And hopefully, that will be signed by many of our representatives. I'm going to send that in an email. We are not actually collecting physical signatures for that just for the sake of time. But we are asking for your consent to add your name to the letter before sending it to representatives.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is Eddie Pratt Jr.
Hi, can you hear me clear?
Yes, we can.
Great. How about, you had some, good to know that they work. So I was listening to this whole budget thing and this whole equity thing and throwing of some odd $35,000 at some position. And it's kind of weird for me because like the idea of social equity, it's, direct actions have to take place. And for the most part, the role of government has been that of a catcher's mitt at best. So in the thought of wanting to get on the preventive side of things, preventive side of care versus being reactive, I would think that that would fall on things like trauma, trauma resistance, mental health services. I think something that's really big, I don't know if anyone's talked about it. It sounds petty, but I believe that the city buses should be free from here on. If the city is still making money, it's going to not be a big deal. That's not creating, you know, obstacles. The thing about, for people like me that come from where I come from, and you know, that's, you know, from the bottom, from the streets, you know, when you're trying to survive, when you're trying to make every dollar count, literally every dollar count. More than that, you have to be able to create a way forward. And with these funds coming into Urbana, you have a one-time shot at being able to do so. One of those things that I really love, and it's something that I've been talking about somewhere everywhere to some everybody, is the SWIFT program at Parkland. A program funded by a million dollars from the Congressional Black Caucus. And I believe Ms. Ammons had something to do with that also. But that million dollars, these 300 people in their pilot year receive short-term job training at no cost in areas that average a median income starting of $50,000 or more, giving the keys of freedom to neighborhoods. The keys to equity, to social change in their own neighborhoods on their own terms. To me, if you're asking me, that may not be the whole picture, but that's freedom. And so I hope that you as a body would move to do such things. If we're really talking about creating, you know, real sustainable, actionable, you know, equity. But otherwise, peace, love, solidarity. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Axelrod. Alan Max Axelrod.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Oh, wow. Yeah, my computer's terrible. Thank you. Good evening. Can you put the clock up, please? Thank you. Alrighty, so before I get to my prepared remarks, I want to just thank Grace and Jaya for having the housing discussion on the agenda. This is crucially important to public health and therefore relevant to the American Rescue Plan as I hope my comments will make transparent to folks. That said, I am the campaign lead of No Amer Shut-Offs, a zero-dollar all-volunteer grassroots coalition of 48 organizations and counting, spanning the state of Illinois, north and south, east and west. We've won four utility shut-off moratoria. We have played an integral role alongside the City Council of Urbana in getting the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program enacted. And we've not stopped since that has been won. As of tonight, the McDonough County Democrats have passed our seventh resolution calling on the governor to enact a mandatory, non-mains tested moratorium on utility shut-offs. I'll briefly explain to you why that is still important and relevant. Next week, May 29th, is when we will hit two weeks past the first payment that is due for a deferred payment agreement that was entered into on the date that utility shut-offs began, on April 14th for Ameren and April 15th for Commonwealth Edison. If those folks who entered into a deferred payment agreement did not have the funds to, as media sources have indicated is the situation, they will then be disconnected en masse at that time. There is some good news, however. We appear to have only had one week of utility shut-offs in April, from April 14th to April 21st. Because on April 22nd, that's when the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program was initially announced as having $80 million and covering anybody who has received a utility subsidy in the last three years. That has now spent $115 million as opposed to $80 million budgeted as of last Monday for 115,000 households, which is more than one in eight households that the Attorney General had noted were at risk at the end of March. We know quite clearly that utility disconnections are a public health risk and therefore it is something that we could choose to spend the American Rescue Plan money on, as it says, "to support public health and COVID-19 mitigation efforts." One of the things that's really important to recognize is that these corporate utilities refuse to provide the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District the disconnection notices after that requirement, which is seasonal, ended in April. That is to say that just like the water utilities, which never had that requirement, the power utilities have been refusing to provide basic pandemic safety information, which means we have to broadly canvass the community rather than going to specific households and trying to get them direly needed assistance. Thankfully, the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program automatically applies credit, but it's over budget already and we don't know when that ceiling will be hit, which means that if they run out of money, people will start getting disconnected too. We don't know how much money they're going to be putting in there and whether or not sufficient to meet the need. The other thing is that homelessness is a public health issue. On August 6th, 2019, I had commented to the Champaign City Council after they did a homeless sweep that after our, you know, organized response, they eventually put in the porta-potties that the homeless community was initially reaching out to ask for before they lost all of their things. The UK did a study showing that there was a 30-year life expectancy deficit. So if we're looking at the things that we can do with the American Rescue Program that would be a one-time expenditure that would result in the saving of money and lives in this situation, housing and utilities are definitely things that we can spend that money on, whether it's public utilities, rooftop, solar, as I presented to the Sustainability Advisory Commission in 2018, meeting all the financial benchmarks for the North Lincoln Fire Station and that not being enacted, instead the target being shifted. I also want to mention that Carl is number seven in total assets and isn't even in the top 25 for the amount of expenditures. They can do more for our community. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Alan. Does anyone else wish to address the city council tonight? I don't see any hands up. Okay. We will move on to unfinished business. There is none. Reports of standing committees. Councilmember Christopher Evans.
Are we moving council input after public input?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we're not. Yes, we are. It's time for council input and communications. Anyone wish to, Grace?
Um, yeah, lots of things on my mind. Just wanted to say thank you again to the public for your continued dedication and input. And I definitely agree with the idea that we need accountability and systemic changes in our city and in policing. For the record, I don't support more money for police de-escalation training. I know that was an idea presented as a council one. I imagine maybe others possibly brought that up, but that was not for me personally. I don't think that we can untrain some implicit bias. And I agree that it would be possibly more meaningful to enforce our current policies, another review of the use of force if the policies in place aren't efficient. And I think that we can also reform a lot of the current training and practices by police as well. I would love to see more of this money going for direct assistance and services to the community, particularly targeted at people of color and those who've experienced violence, trauma, or other hardships on top of the pandemic and other challenges. And I would love partnering with local organizations for more community building with things like youth centers, social services, other public infrastructure and services that can really target more of the root of our community safety potential issues. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Seeing none. And now we'll move on to reports of standing committees.
Okay, does anybody have a report?
What you'll do is you'll move. This is this is your committee of the whole report, Chris.
Okay.
You'll need to move um the second item under the regular agenda.
Okay, you mean ordinance uh oh five oh eighteen?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh five dash oh eighteen and ordinance amending the two thousand and five comprehensive plan of the city of Urbana? This is a Champagne County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, a twenty-twenty update, case number two four one nine dash CP dash two one. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Um Chris, I'm sorry, I should have given better guidance, but you as the committee chair actually will move this ordinance and then ask for a second. And I apologize. I keep forgetting. I think you're old hands at this.
Not me. Um yeah, so will the chair uh give a motion?
I second your motion, Christopher.
I'm seconding my motion. Okay.
I'm seconding your motion.
Okay, so.
You moved it. I second it.
Okay, second seconded by Sharice.
Okay.
So Christopher, as the committee chair, moved ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero five dash zero one eight, and it was seconded by Sharice.
There were a couple of follow-up items that if if now would be a good time for me to.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So um there there was um if a question asked about an emergency text message alert, uh which there is, um that the Champaign County EMA provides that you can sign up for, and and we will be posting that. Um we will be doing a social media post about that rather than have me read it for people right now. Um but just want people to know that that's coming and that is available. Um there was also questions about whether we have an evacuation plan, evacuation route, traffic control plan, and so forth in in the event that a significant portion of the community needed to be evacuated. We do have individual city government building evacuation plans. In the event that there were uh an evacuation needed of all or part of the city, the way that we handle that is that we stand, we would stand up for whatever the event was, a unified command, and we follow the the NIMS protocol. NIMS stands for National Incident Management System. And um people across the country are trained in this system. Um many city employees, certainly in police and fire, but some of the city leadership have also been trained in this. And we know how we know how to function under a unified command and and setting in a path for evacuation that would be responsive to the specifics of that incident would be part of the um the planning for that group. So that's how we would handle it if there was any kind of large-scale evacuation required. And then um another question was, do we have an active shooter plan? Certainly, the police train to deal with active shooters, and we also train our employees in what to do in the event of an active shooter, and we sometimes do actual drills. Um the the protocol that we use is another one that is I think fairly accepted nationally, and it's called the Run, Hide, Fight approach. And anybody that wanted to know more about that, you can just Google that on YouTube and and you can see a um see a uh a video that explains it, but it's literally run if you can, hide if you can't run, and then fight if you if you have to. There was a specific question or issue raised about um the the farmer's market or the market at the square. And um that was a good trip, um you know, prod for us to um develop a fact sheet for our staff and the vendors on that protocol in the event there would be an incident at the market so that they can be they can be ready, you know, if if an incident were to happen. And then finally, there was a question about whether we're planning to to apply for any grants for hazard mitigation, and the answer to that is not at this time. That was the follow-up.
Thank you, Carol. Any other discussion on this item? Sharice?
Just one question. Is it possible that city council members get trained in in any of those things, the NIMS or anything like that? Or is is that just um for, you know, like the fire chief, the police chief, mayor, you, you know?
Typically elected officials um that would be that would be trained on it would be the the mayors, because they are the spokespeople for the community. And um other people are are staff. I mean, we're happy to, you know, we can share some more information about it, but actually going through the training, um there there wouldn't normally be a role for a council member um in that in that sort of a situation. Although now that now that we're talking about it, it might be something that we need to to have the mayor pro tem trained on, because you could imagine that there could be a situation where that would be relevant. So it might be appropriate for the mayor pro tem, but other than that, I I I don't see a role for the council members.
I see James' hands. I I will say that once we go back to in-person meetings, we city council does get trained in the event there's an incident in council chambers. So so that'll be happening once we get back into the council chambers.
Yeah, I will. I will say that there is um online training for ICS, the Incident Command System, and there's some there's a basic level that would help people understand the, you know, the the thing behind ICS and some of the terminology used with it. I would suggest that as council members, we probably don't need more than that, but you can go down that path as far as you are willing to sit through online training. I I will send a link out to all of you once I relocate it.
Thanks, James.
I will say that in the early days of the pandemic, we all um got out our NIMS manuals and refreshed our memory and actually at the county level and within the city of Urbana, the initial setup was based on our NIMS training. As the pandemic persisted, it 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 became clear that this we weren't dealing with an incident as much as an experience that was going to last a long time. So we, you know, we adapted a lot of our policies and procedures, but having that training and having us all having had the same training, it allowed us to get get things set up and underway and structured and um respond in a timely basis at the beginning, and I think that made a big difference even throughout the the rest of the year. So so having all of us using the same amount of training, whether we're in Champaign or Urbana or Champaign County or any of the other, you know, police, fire, um we were all operating from the same playbook, and that made a big difference. Um any other questions on this uh item? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Um, thank you, Chris. Items, next item is reports of special committees. Don't believe we have any reports of officers. And Carol had Carol had something.
Yes, we have something uh we have something we'd like to celebrate tonight. So um Jason is gonna put up, I don't know if you can put up both pictures at the same time or or um or just one at a time. Okay. The um I'm I'm gonna talk about the these two gentlemen in the in the fire department, and they've one has just recently achieved um the status of chief fire officer, and the other did this some years ago, and no one ever celebrated it, so we're celebrating both of them. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about what the chief fire officer is. That designation is the highest certification that's earned through the State of Illinois Office of the State Fire Marshal. The coursework is conducted over fifty-two weeks, and the candidates being recognized this evening did this on their own time and paid for the coursework themselves to be able to add this training to what they bring back to the city of Urbana. Some of the topics that the chief fire officer must pass and thoroughly understand from the material researched and presented are as follows. And I'm just gonna hit a couple. There's much more. Leadership skills, professional development, strategic planning, emergency management, budget and finance, and the sixteen life safety initiatives published by the National Fallen Firefighter Foundation and the National Fire Administration. At the end of this program, the candidate has to present a large document, and it's generally more than seventy-five pages, and that is reviewed by their peers and then presented to a board identified by the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association. The Chief Fire Officer Program addresses current issues and provides the chief executive officer with the tools needed to be a progressive and diverse leader in their community. This is truly a highly recognized certification, and the dedication of these fire officers is greatly appreciated. So the gentleman that you see on the screen um right now is Captain Lee Buxton, and he was just recently awarded the um chief fire officer designation. And then the other photo right there is Lieutenant Steve Doggett, and he got the designation in twenty seventeen, but he was never celebrated, so we'd like to celebrate him tonight. And the other person in the department who has the chief fire officer designation is Chief Chuck Loss, and we have one more person who's in the program, and so we look forward to celebrating him once he's certified. So thank you very much.
Thanks and congratulations to all. I wanted to let council know that um Julie Pride reports that now sixty-three percent of Champaign County adults eighteen and older have at least one dose of the vaccine. The goal is to reach seventy percent by July fourth. That's also consistent with the federal goal. And our local goal here is to reach eighty-five percent of that population by fall. And of course, our long-term goal is to eventually be able to offer the vaccine to children under the age of twelve, and at that point, then our community will truly be protected. Right now, we're looking at the 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 group is looking at, local groups are looking at ways to provide incentives, ways to incentivize people to get the vaccine, and there's lots of different ideas being um floated around. Apparently, United Airlines just announced that they're holding a raffle, giving away free flights for a year for vaccinated individuals. Um you've heard about cash prizes, pretty astonishingly large cash prizes being offered in different states. So so um we're we're looking at ways to incentivize uh folks who have, for various reasons, have have chosen, have not yet chosen to get the vaccine. Um any other officer reports?
Diane, can can I um piggyback on what you just said for a minute?
A minute?
A minute. Because um and I know I know you and uh you work very closely with the CUPHD, and so I'm just gonna say, one of the things that I still think would be very helpful is if uh because people have different time slots, I think sometimes that's that's an issue in employment when they can get to uh do this, and a lot of the the vaccinations take place during the day. And if if there could be any time that they do something from, you know, five to ten or or something like that, rather than just have it all during the day, because people work different types of hours, and of course, during the day, they may be asleep and they may not be available to to I had I had I've talked to people that said that was one of their main problems, was just being able to get up or to get there after their shifts or something during a particular day. So it's just something that you might want to suggest to Julie in that you they may be able to to incentivize people to be vaccinated by just instead of sticking to the banker's hours, you know, go to that that swing shift time and try to get uh maybe even show up at an employer's place that, you know, at the employer to to do it at those particular times. I know it's difficult to get people to volunteer and come in and vaccinate folks as it is, but I I really think that that could make a difference with a lot of a lot of uh of our population that works that work at at different hours of the day.
I know they've done, you know, the the multiple weekend clinics, but I'll pass along the suggestion on the evening time. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to new business, and the item there is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero five dash zero two three R. It's for the Amtrak Corridor Expansion Plan Joint Request for Funding, and this would be for in support of enhanced passenger rail service to Champaign-Urbana on multi-frequency Chicago, New Orleans, Chicago, Carbondale, and Carbondale-Chicago routes. So the uh the resolution has a lot of detail in it, but if to summarize, this is a um initiative that's supported by our partners in Champaign County, and this is the uh brought to us via Champaign County First, which is an organization that has lobbied for specific projects for a number of years at the federal and state level. Usually um infrastructure, usually infrastructure projects of various types. So belonging to this group are Champaign-Urbana, Savoy, Rantoul, the University of Illinois, Champaign County, Mohammed, the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation, and the Champaign County Chamber of Commerce, and some of the projects have in the past have been um mapping of the Mohammed Aquifer, which is the top priority of the Mohammed Aquifer Task Force. Um the Curtis Road Overpass, uh funding for improvements to Willard Airport. It just depends from, you know, one year to the next. But one of the things we've consistently pressed for year after year has been better Amtrak service, both in terms of on-time performance, which is just a real challenge in this community, plus um frequency of service, because we know there is a huge demand for for um rail travel between Champaign-Urbana, north and south. And um this joint resolution would specifically ask our congressional delegation from the State of Illinois to support and pass the next Federal Surface Transportation Reauthorization. And this reauthorization includes funding for enhancing Amtrak service in our community by adding a fourth daily train along the I fifty-seven corridor with Champaign-Urbana as a stop. One thing that we um did point out in this resolution is that the um in FY twenty nineteen, so the last fiscal year before the pandemic, the terminal, Illinois Terminal in Champaign hosted over two hundred and fifty-seven thousand boardings and alighting. So there's a lot of passenger service happening right here in Champaign-Urbana. And we were one of the the locations that showed the least reduction in ridership of all the Midwestern trains during the pandemic, which is, I think, a reflection of the fact that the U of I made this enormous effort to keep students in person, and um people continued to take the train. So so we continue to work for more reliable service, and that that continues to be a challenge, because as you you may know, the Amtrak trains share the same tracks. We we the Amtrak trains operate on the Canadian National Freight Tracks, and while passenger trains are supposed to have priority on these tracks, it doesn't always happen, and we're our elected officials, especially Senator Durbin's office and Senator Duckworth's office, have been really leaders in trying to hold Canadian National um accountable and promote passenger rail service. So each community that I mentioned earlier is being asked to pass this resolution in support of enhanced service and in in support of passenger rail service in general, and I appreciate your support. This group is also working on a separate issue of high-speed rail, so we have two separate rail focuses in our lobbying efforts. Grace?
That was one of my questions about high-speed rail, and that's a separate.
That was one of my questions about high-speed rail, and that's a separate, Sid.
Correct.
I was wondering too, if there was, I don't know, I feel like one of the disadvantages of Amtrak from Champaign for me is that it doesn't go to the airport, which I understand it can't go all the way. But you know, like, if we're talking about as a Champaign citizen, the bus is cheaper and it takes you right to the airport. So I'm just wondering, you know, just a general question if Amtrak could be more competitive or more connected in that way.
Well, sure, if it went straight to the, to O'Hare, absolutely. This, this particular resolution isn't, isn't asking for that. Although this included in the overall act would be, let me get the number, thirty-six new routes and service improvements on twenty-three existing routes and new service to more than a hundred sixty places not now served. We have a long way to go in this country on our passenger rail network, that's for sure. But, but, but I'll tell you, based on years of working on this issue and, and listening to the community, it's incredibly important for people to be able to rely on this service and to have a predictable arrival and departure time for our trains. And, and that's one of the things that, that this would also help. But you're right, a, a direct route to O'Hare would be terrific.
Yes, I understand, not part of this issue, but just accessibility and frequency of it, you know, I think that is something that I see.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Sharice?
Can I make a motion, please?
You may.
And I'd like to move that revolution, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero five dash zero two three R. Amtrak Corridor Expansion Plan Joint Request for Funding for Enhanced Passenger Rail Service to Champaign-Urbana on multi-frequency Chicago, New Orleans, Chicago-Carbondale and Carbondale-Chicago routes be moved for approval by the city council.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, was that James? Okay, thank you. Further discussion. Sharice?
Just to kind of piggyback on what Grace said, but also realizing some other things. I, as a, as a child and as a teenager, which was many years ago, but I know the train was very useful, going in particularly coming, going from here to Chicago. And it, it seemed to be safer than trying to drive in a car, especially during winter time. And there, that I've had, the, I've had the experience of going to Southern Illinois on those trains and, and going up to Chicago and I did Allstate course. And they're very punctual, they're very, they have been very punctual then and, and extremely a, a lot more reliable than people might think, especially, you know, for, for those, those types of trips. I think regarding what Grace is saying, as far as a train going out to the airport, that, that would be a, a, probably a federal thing on the railways, trying to just get a rail to go out to the airport. That would have to be something that would be added on and built by, I believe, the federal government, but not, not a bad idea. But I do think that the trains have probably been running longer than the airport has been here. So anyway, that's, that's just all I wanted to add to that discussion.
Well, if you've ridden on trains in other countries, you know, we have a long way to go in the US.
Yeah.
Come anywhere close to what's available. However, we're, we can at least start on trying to get a little bit better service between Champaign-Urbana and our points north and south. Any other discussion? Okay, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Next up are appointments to boards and commissions and staff. So the first appointment I would like to bring for your consideration is for Carla Boyd. And I would like to appoint her to the position of the Human Rights and Equity Officer. Over the past twenty-three years, she's served in positions at Danville Area Community College, including the Chief Diversity Officer, Assistant VP Student Services, Director of the Career and Employment Services, Assistant Director of Admissions and Records, Student Diversity Advocate, Director of Project Excel, and Program Specialist in a Job Training Partnership Program. She's also served as an instructor in reading skills, success in college, and race and ethnic relations. She holds a BA in Psychology from Edinburgh University, Pennsylvania, MS in Education Administration from Eastern Illinois University Charleston, and currently is studying for a PhD in Education Administration and Foundations at Illinois State University. She has extensive experience of working and volunteering with community stakeholders and service organizations, advocacy entities, and faith-based organizations, including the Vermillion County Housing Board of Commissioners, The Dwelling Place, the Danville Public Library. She has additional experience in implementing state and federal laws and regulations related to civil rights, human rights, equal employment opportunities, including the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, the American Disability Act, Title IX, and others. And I would just, I included a quote from one of, one of the, during the search process, one of the things we do is, is send questions to each candidate and ask them to answer specific questions. And one of the answers to Carla's, to the questions was this response from Carla. Quote, "I have facilitated courageous conversations on race, privilege, hidden rules of economic class, and implicit bias. The Human Rights Ordinance and Civilian Police Review Board reform should be changes that reflect the perspectives from all stakeholders, those that will impose the ordinances and those that the ordinances will be imposed upon. Assuring that input is included from all sectors of the community will increase buy-in and could alleviate a lot of the contention that usually surrounds ordinances like this. Relationship is the cornerstone of building trust, and it's hard to trust someone you do not know." And what became very clear during the interview process, and we held two separate in-person interviews, and I wanted to take a minute just to recognize the folks who participated in the interviews internally, and we also had external stakeholders. So internally, it was myself, Elizabeth Borman from HR, Carol Mitten, Darius White from our Economic Development Staff, Lamont Peppers, who's our Gate, Community Engagement Coordinator. We also had Frances Rigbird, who serves as Chair of the Human Relations Commission, and Ricardo Diaz from the CPRB. So they participated in one or both of the two series of interviews with Carla. And she's with us here tonight, and I, I don't want to put her on the spot, but I just wanted to ask her if she wanted to just introduce herself personally and if she had anything she wanted to add. But it's my honor to, to bring this appointment to you for your consideration.
I just wanted to say good evening to everybody. And I hope you appoint me so that I can get to work. I'm excited about the opportunity that the city of Urbana is allowing me to participate in. And I hope I can add value to that position and to the community.
Thank you, Carla. And she schedules to start tomorrow morning, should everything go well tonight, so. She's anxious to get work, to work. Could I entertain a motion, please? Sharice?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Carla Boyd as Human, Human Rights and Equity Officer for the city of Urbana.
I'll second.
Who was that, please?
Yeah.
She, okay. Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jeff. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Carla, and welcome to the city of Urbana. All right, we'll move on to the second appointment, and that is for a vacancy on the Civilian Police Review Board. We were notified a few weeks ago, there are several vacancies, but, but we were notified. Also, I wanted to let folks know, we were notified a few weeks ago that long-term board member Scotty Dossett would be stepping down at the end of June of this year. So we'll, more to say about, but Scotty's service, but, but I'm sorry to see that announcement. Anyway, I would like to submit for your consideration an appointment for Colum Wilson. And this is for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So that would be to complete the unexpired term of Darren Price, who had to step down. Colum Wilson's a five-year resident of the city of Urbana. He's a nine-year resident of Champaign County. He holds a bachelor's degree in physics engineering from the U of I at Urbana-Champaign. And he currently works as Senior Design Engineer for Vesuvius in Champaign, Illinois. His responsibilities there included drafting product drawings, maintaining records, leading a team that bridges sales, research, development, and manufacturing departments. And I should say, before I go on, participating in the interview for Colum Wilson was Ricardo Diaz, who serves as Chair of the Civilian Police Review Board, Deputy Chief Richard Searls, and myself. The, the role that he plays now at Vesuvius focuses on maintaining high standard of quality and safety while seeking solutions that address the concerns of all the groups. And I, we, we spoke with Colum for about an hour and delved into that aspect. And what came to be very clear in our conversation with him was he's got, his job responsibility includes listening to people who may come at a situation from different perspectives, they have different wants, they have different needs. They, but they have a common goal for the company of maintaining quality and safety. But it's his job to seek solutions that address the concerns of the people involved. And I think that ability that he is using in his professional life is something that's very valuable to someone who serves on the CPRB, where you're listening to many different perspectives, concerns. Sometimes people don't agree on certain things, but your job is to find, is to find a solution and make a decision. So I, I believed that, and I think from all of us listening, we were very impressed with, with his, his skills in this area. He also brings a young perspective to, to the board as well. He generally expressed desire to help the city he lives in. He became interested in the position when actually Scott Dossett announced on the Neighborhood List, sir, that he was stepping down, and he encouraged folks to apply. And Colum has volunteered locally for CU Fair, which is Friends and Allies of Immigrants and Refugees. And Ricardo was going to try to come tonight. I don't, let me check and see. Doesn't look like he was able to make it. Anyway, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Have questions or do we motion and then discuss?
We need a motion first.
I'll motion to approve, in order to discuss, right, appointment of Colum Wilson for CPRB, Civilian Police Review Board.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
I was wondering how many empty seats there are, especially with them considering changing the qualifications for, you know, who can serve on this board?
Well, this is for one unexpired term. There will be one, two.
I think there are currently, once Scott steps down, and depending on what you do with, with this position, there, there will be three vacancies. With, with Scott stepping down, there will be four. And the complement, I think, is seven.
And there is some discussion underway about changing some of the requirements to serve on CPRB to change the discrimination on criminal background, is that correct?
Correct.
Well, just, let me just, let me just say, there, there has been some discussion, but that, at the moment, is a part of the collective bargaining agreement with the police. So unless that changes, that, that issue will not change about people with a criminal background, a felony conviction background.
There's a lot of work to be done, as you know. And those discussions and, and that work will get underway.
Is that typical, that would be a piece of the bargaining? I mean, isn't that a city ordinance, kind of separate from a union thing?
When the, I don't know if this was, I, I think this goes back, maybe when the CPRB was formed or, or what, there was, there was something to do with the CPRB and it could have been when it was formed, that there was a side letter to the collective bargaining agreement. And it was part of, you know, sort of a grand, you know, negotiation around the, I, I do believe it was the formation of the CPRB, but I could, I could double-check this. And there are, there are actually two restrictions on, on people becoming members of CPRB. One is if you have a felony conviction in your background, and the other is, is if you have a law enforcement background. So there, there was that, that was part of the, the balancing. And then the other balancing was some of the provisions that are, that are in the side letter have to do with, they, they captured the felony conviction piece in the side letter as well as, I believe that's where it says that the, that the hearings for the appeal hearings have to be held in closed session.
Grace?
Just let anyone jump in if you had something before me. I was also wondering if you had any other insight you could share from the interview process for this person's specific interest or qualifications for CPRB? You know, I could hear the engineering background and I see the want to build trust between law enforcement and the people they serve. If there's anything more specifically that you think this person's a good candidate for review board for civilians?
I think the desire to participate, the ability to take into account a lot of different information and process the information in, in, in a fair way. The, the interest in learning more about the process. A lot of people come onto the board without, you know, specific experience in, in, in the processes themselves. But I believe he has the ability and the desire to undergo the training required and to put in the time required of this position. And there's going to be, you know, this is, this is, this is a hard-working board, especially right now when they're working their way through sixty appeals. And that, that commitment to doing that was very important. Any other questions? Any other questions? Are we ready to vote? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins?
No.
Okay, that motion passes. Last item on the agenda today is a discussion on affordable housing issues, and this was brought to the council by Grace Wilken and J. F. Colacetti. So I will turn that discussion over to council members.
Thank you. And while we do, just a quick introduction, if staff or whoever could add Danielle Chinwitz as a panelist. And so I think for the discussion tonight, we'd like to address a really big, important issue of accessible housing and emergency housing and some of the services and needs in our community. So we have three kind of bullet points that thinking of going through. One is just general township operations and kind of how we interact with township as a council, and some of the services they offer and how we can support that. Second was about emergency or transitional housing for kind of immediate needs. And then third one on accessible housing and being accessible financially, dependent on source of income, criminal background, anything like that. But I think Danielle was going to start us off with maybe a presentation touching on those three points.
And I'm just going to jump in quickly, Grace, just again, in terms of context, I just want to link this back to the discussions that have been had by council, by our community members, recognizing especially with the impact of the pandemic, with concerns about the lifting of moratoria, that this is something that's really time-sensitive, so we wanted to make sure that this was addressed or brought forward quickly. We know this is going to be a process, there are going to be parts that are more long-term, but want to start with the three items that Grace outlined. And Danielle, whenever you are ready.
Okay, good evening. I'm sorry it's so late. My kid is already asleep, and I'm still at the office. Not a great look. So I sent a document to you all just now to your email, which might be helpful in terms of following along. And there were three topics on the table, and I guess I want to suggest for the purposes of time that maybe we focus on number two and three, which is what my document is focused on. The first, which is township services. I did cover initially at the township meeting, our last meeting, and I will continue at our next meeting. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions about township services, so like, feel free to, you know, love questions. But in terms of presenting, I think you would be here for a long time if I also presented on topic one. Could I share my screen just so the public could also see? Let me see, it looks like I can. I just want the public to be able to see the same thing that I sent to the council, since we're not able to be in person. Again, you can look at your email and see this document as well. So this is a variation of a document I actually presented to the mayor. Both mayors, Finan and Barlin, and our state representative Emmens. I presented something similar to the Progressive Caucus of the state of Illinois. I continue to update this document. One thing that is new is that I've refined the response or kind of solutions section. So I'm going to, you have this document, I'm not going to read it to you, I'm just going to kind of cover some of the highlights so that there's some time for discussion and back and forth. So basically, let's, you know, we can't solve any problems until we understand their root causes, right? And it's important for us to look at not only national data, but local data and local trends. So that's an area where township is happy to help. There's also other partners that do a really good job of pulling local data, like Regional Plan Commission is very data-driven, and, but frankly, you know, the, you know, media tends to focus on what the national and state data is, and there isn't a lot of data collection locally. So first root problem, income is not kept up with rents, leading to rent burden evictions and risks of homelessness. And, you know, we're a community of contrast, to borrow a united way, quote, "with a professional class living alongside a service class." That service class faces poverty wages in two distinctive layoff periods per year, each summer and winter. In 2019, a person had to work 73 hours at minimum wage to afford an average two-bedroom apartment and cost of utilities here. And really, kind of starkly, pre-COVID, two-thirds of Urbana renters, and almost the same in Champaign, were rent-burdened, paying more than a third of their income in rent. The last time we did a survey, we were looking at basically one eviction in Urbana per calendar day. So here's, you know, this is an opportunity, as we wait into this conversation, is to really look big picture. How can we eliminate all evictions, let's start in Urbana, due to non-payment, right? As long as the resident is willing to engage with rental assistance partners, how can we divert those evictions from the county, and they don't even hit eviction court? How do we keep people from, you know, from landlords having to pay another $1,500 or tenants having this on their records? Second, we need to really look at our economy. Well-paying jobs in our community are public sector jobs, that's where most of the well-paying jobs are. We should ensure that all government bodies, park districts, libraries, city, township, schools, are cultivating and hiring a local and diverse workforce. That means open hiring processes, targeted outreach to populations. We should look at direct hires and contract work. Public bodies can support those contractors in bonding and ensuring small contractors, there's a lot of good models. We should really be prioritizing local minority and female-owned businesses, and there really should be a clear path for youth to grow into public jobs. I think the public, the Housing Authority is a great model for this to learn from, and I think every public body should publish information and data on their hiring practices and diversity. I really think we would, and we should break it down by leadership, workers, and people who are precarious work, so it's really, and we should look at ethnic and racial data, gender, et cetera, in that we really should and can. And I think this, you know, gun violence is its whole other topic. I know is near and dear to the mayor's heart and to the heart of the folks on the council, but we need to set a goal for employment of all youth 18 and up who wish to work, and summer employment for 16 and up. And I think the public sector, look at where our dollars are going, we need to start with public sector jobs, look at nonprofits that we support, and work out from there into the private sector. Next point in terms of root causes. People with disabilities in our community cannot afford any independent housing without a subsidy. So we know that 3,200 people in Champaign County live off of SSI. That's just one portion of disability income, that is the one that makes the smaller amount. We also have SSDI, but I'm just looking at SSI because that income is $794 per month, right? We know, our office did the research, and this will be in our strategic plan, that in Champaign County, SSI participants have increased by 21.2% in 10 years, right? And when we look at it, it's not just, it's not more aged folks, it's more disabled folks. To avoid rent burden, that means an SSI recipient needs to pay less than like $265 in rent. And raise your hand if you know of a place where you can live independently in this county for $265. I thought so. So we serve about 50 disabled Urbana residents waiting disability determinations, and it can take many years. So here is the solutions that I would like us to consider. We need housing options such as efficiency apartments at the 300 to 400 market price point. Now, you might say, that's impossible, how would we get to that? But I just want to point out that homestead, which is fully subsidized, but their rental unit amounts are about $400. So the question is, how do we get there? Like, can we get there? How can we get there? We need more subsidized and ADA accessible housing for people with disabilities. So today, Housing Authority had a waitlist opening for Pinewood Place, it's going to be open for a number of weeks. It's 25 new subsidized one-bedroom apartments in Urbana for disabled residents, and it's really a model for what's needed. I just spoke with Ida on the phone last week with Representative Emmens, and they said that they will consider any application for the building of new housing from their program. And that is the same program that funded this program. So if we, now that we have that open and moving, I think we should return back to Ida. They're looking for downstate applications. Families with disabled head of household have the fewest options available to them. This is a really important category of folks who are underserved. Most housing for people with disabilities that's subsidized, I meant to say subsidized here, most subsidized housing is coupled with senior housing, and children are not allowed. So it's really important, we create vouchers, tenant-based rent assistance, and rapid rehousing focused on households with parents with disabilities. One of the only places that township is able to place households with head of household disabled is statewide referral network. This, they should have full occupancy of units locally, they don't. The SRN places homeless and disabled households in subsidized or reduced-rate units. Developers get extremely lucrative tax breaks to do this, it's dollar-for-dollar tax breaks. And really, there's a lot of incentives not to fill them. So we've been beating down that door, and we have gotten, I got trained two years ago in SRN placement, we placed two, which is, you know, that's something, but like, we need to do better. Third root cause, there is a rapidly growing supply of available rental units in Champaign County, but low-income families and those reentering from prison and jail can't access them. So you might be surprised to learn that the vacant rental stock has increased 50% from 2,000 to 3,000 empty units in the past years, that's just Champaign-Urbana. This amount would have housed the number of known homeless residents in the county several times over. There's one term for this, and it's called market failure. I regularly keep track of the number of voucher holders who are circulating, looking for a place to live each month. Last month, it was almost 100, but last year, the average was 85. Those are folks who have vouchers, right? They've waited in line, and they've gotten their voucher, and they cannot access housing. The number one thing that they tell us is that they face is discrimination. So I'm very pleased to hear that there's a new human rights officer and equity officer who hired. I'm very, very welcome her to the circle. But we have got to address discrimination that is happening in our community. The city of Urbana needs to send DCs, send assist letters to the landlords, flaunting the Human Rights Ordinance. And I have a report that lists those landlords. The state, right now, is considering the Homeless Prevention Act, House Bill 2775. It would make it harder for landlords to discriminate against voucher holders across the state. Please ask your legislators to create this statewide ban on discrimination. And then we need to support reentry housing for men, women, and transgender residents. There's many things we can talk about, that's a big bucket. Next root issue is there is a growing demand for rental assistance and subsidized housing. I would estimate, the tenant union estimates that four out of five households that need rental subsidies are not being served. And there's some information about kind of the housing choice voucher process and numbers on the list. I serve on the Housing Authority Board by appointment of the mayor and the board. You can also look at, you know, 22% of calls to two-on-one in fiscal year '20 were for rental assistance, and 2,800 calls to centralize intake were for rental assistance. So we do have an opportunity that we're not using, and I'll just kind of bump down to that opportunity first. Both school districts now could redirect their transportation dollars for homeless children towards rental assistance. That's saying, thanks to a bill that was passed by Scott Bennett in 2000, he was the chief sponsor, passed in 2017. And that gives the option of how school districts redirecting those dollars. I spoke with the Champaign Uniforms Homeless Liaison, this was 2019 information, but they spent over $200,000 in transportation for homeless students. That is practically half of what, excuse me, that is almost all of what we spent in rental assistance pre-COVID. So like, just taking some of those dollars and redirecting it would make a huge difference. And we need to sit down with the school districts and really work that out. Now, they are going to see a dip in transportation dollars because it's based on census with during COVID, but it will go back up again, so we could have those conversations this next year in preparation for those dollars increasing. We really need to increase the number of housing vouchers and project-based vouchers available in Champaign County. 1.6 times home funds are expected this next year due to COVID. That was our last meeting led by the city of Champaign. And home funds to the city should be used to expand tenant-based rental assistance, especially for incomes below 30% of median family income, so the very poor. We spearheaded a rental assistance consortium in 2018. It started with RPC, City of Champaign, and ourselves, and we have greatly increased the dollars by fivefold for rental assistance in our community. This is, again, pre-COVID, a lot of things, you know, we got a lot of rental assistance dollars under COVID. Now, the cities and Housing Authority have joined this group, which is great, and we really need to grow that base, grow the rental assistance program, and link it to court system to prevent eviction filings altogether. And I'm just going to point out the last two on this list. Root problem is Champaign lacks sufficient emergency housing and supports for homeless residents and families. I have talked about this a lot, but we have died your need for same-day shelter for families. So Emergency Family Shelter, which is an amazing program, has eight units for the entire county. Families wait six to 150 days, average wait of 30 days to access the shelter. That group went to the Housing Authority and asked to increase it by two units, and the Housing Authority leadership at the time said, no, we're not even going to talk about it. There is an opening with new leadership for us to look at expanding those units by two because there are actually two units on site that could be used for that, so that's a possibility. I just want to point out 188 homeless children attended Urbana school districts this fiscal year. So, and then we know that CU at Home was housing 70-plus homeless men and women under one roof, and they really stand alone in providing housing to many of their residents. They had to recently, two weeks ago, pause services due to staffing and safety concerns, and dozens of homeless residents became street homeless. We are supporting in hotels, thanks to our angel donors, all of the street homeless residents, excuse me, CU at Home residents who were receiving general assistance. And then we have issues where people in wheelchairs or have chronic medical conditions or medically fragile, they can't be accommodated through our existing shelters that have Congress living on the floor. So, you know, we, as you know, we launched an emergency housing program, we can serve four to six families, and we did that under COVID, and we're hoping to make that sustainable in our new home. We appreciate any support for that program. We need to develop diverse and multiple services for homeless residents, including private dwelling options for those who have panic disorders and social anxiety, who have, you know, medical conditions. And we frankly need more alternatives for female and transgender residents. So we work with residents who were staying at CU at Home when it was open, who had been victimized by residents staying on the other side. And so this, we need to be looking at, you know, this whole idea that we're going to put it all in one place. I have always argued against this, despite the fact that I really appreciate CU at Home stepping up and making that space a possibility. So I just want to highlight in closing the need that women and children have. In particular, I want to point out, the way the federal government describes homelessness is very narrow and leaves out women and children. There has been multiple attempts at the level of Congress to change this. So HUD definition of homeless is you're unsheltered. So HUD definition of homeless is you're unsheltered, you are kind of registered within domestic violence shelter, or you're in a place not meant for human habitation. So we have a lot of women and children in particular, and sometimes men and children moving house to house, right? So we, that's a huge need. We see about two-thirds of the adults who have received homeless assistance are women, and about half are children. We talk with participants all the time who resort to survival sex. Sometimes it's coerced by their landlords. And we have a really significant issue of childhood sexual abuse leading to homelessness. And I mentioned a report we did in two thousand eighteen that showed that ten percent of women served conceived their first child under the age of sixteen. And this was particularly women served, but with homeless assistance, meaning that they're victims of childhood sexual abuse compared to less than one percent. And actually, the number, childhood sexual abuse would be under seventeen, but we looked at under sixteen to look at this. So here's a couple of things. We really have to look at both populations, literally homeless, which is what our program serves right now, and the McKinney Vento Definition Act homeless, the people moving home to home. We need emergency transitional and permanent housing. And we really need to support the safety and empowerment of women and children, ensuring safe housing, full access to reproductive choices, sexual abuse prevention, and free mental health support for victims of violence. So I will stop there, but these were kind of the top points, looking at both root problems and solutions. And of course, obviously, the, there's a lot of details in this, but I will stop, and I'm happy to take questions and listen to your discussions. I'll do a stop sharing.
Any questions for Danielle?
Yeah, Danielle, the legislation that, I can't remember the name of the person that brought it up during public input regarding the ban on rent control. Would that be helpful at all if, if, you know, if Illinois banned rent control, would that be helpful in getting some of those units that are currently being warehoused, so to speak, filled, you know, people housed in those?
I think the proposal was to ban the limits on rent control. I, you know, it's an important issue that I think impacts larger metropolitan areas like Chicago more than here locally. It's not particularly listed on this list because I don't think it's where we get the biggest bang for our buck. But I certainly think supporting legislation that empowers tenants at this time, especially after we've seen such aggressive growth in the, in property development, you know, should be looked into closely and supported where possible.
Well, I was just wondering that because I lived in a rent-controlled building for years when I lived in LA. I know that there's a huge difference in like what I started off paying when I moved in and what, when I moved out, you know, what that new person that would move into my apartment would end up paying, like, three times what I was paying plus. And so, and, and I was in that apartment for several, for several years. So that's why I was wondering if, you know, because a lot of this, and it's not that I don't, it's not that I disagree with you, because I totally agree with what you're saying. But a lot of it also depends on the federal government raising minimum wage.
Absolutely. The number-one thing that would change housing is increasing the minimum wage. I'm focused on what we can control, but yes, I agree with you one hundred percent.
Yeah, so it just, it just seems like there's a lot that we, you know, maybe, I should say this in a public forum, if, if, if people just write letters to their representatives and say, change the, you know, up the minimum wage, number one. Number two, change the definition of what regarding homelessness. So, so that women and men, because, and you were talking about the SSI, which is also a federal thing. You know, there, there are several bullet points that you had that, that I know that stuff needs to happen, but it can only, some, some of that can only happen on a federal level. So, yeah, I don't know if there needs to be a letter-writing campaign where we just overwhelm our representatives with, with these requests that, you know, will not just benefit Champaign-Urbana, but will benefit the entire country trying to get that stuff done.
Absolutely. And I think in the meantime, we have to do, we have to own our piece, right? And that's, I think, the focus of the conversation, but I agree with you completely.
Yeah, I just don't, I just don't know how to, it's like so much that you gave, it's like, where do we start? Where, where would be your starting point?
James, Chandra, and then Chris.
Yeah, I'm going to go back to kind of how we started out this meeting, Danielle, and ask you to talk about how much of this, as we learn our roles as town board members, and as we learn our roles as the council members, for, for those of us who are new, how much of this is something you see as working on through the township role that we have, and how much of it is city council? I can see elements of both in some of the things that we talked about. And so if you could kind of lay it out to us, how, how you think one side or the other takes the lead?
One of the things that might be helpful is to really look at the picture of the pie for as a whole township and city. We have township levy dollars. Township has a tiny bit of, you know, of private donations, tiny in the larger scheme of things, right? We did get a hundred thousand dollars in donations this last year, so I'm grateful. And, and we, thanks to our partnership with the City of Urbana, we get emergency solution grants, money for rapid rehousing to market-rate houses in the community. So I can definitely show what the budget looks like from a housing perspective. And then I think looking at the city, the annual action plan and the city's budget, there are, you know, large pots of money that come through the home and CDBG dollars, and there's also the general fund. And then there's things that don't cost money in the same way, like addressing discrimination and making, you know, and enforcing, you know, the property inspections, et cetera, which I frankly think the city has done a much better job of in the last few years in terms of upping property, property inspections. So I think it would be useful as new council members slash town board members to kind of look at that whole pie as we, as I present, from the township side, our budget, and the city presents its budget. Let's, you know, let's look at where are our lanes, right? And where do we want to invest those dollars? And obviously, we have some, this township doesn't have access to the COVID dollars, but the city does. And the county has a number of dollars coming in that should be, you know, serving the whole county and not necessarily just the rural areas. So I would really encourage us to kind of build the Lego blocks of like, where are the dollars? What can they be used for? And then, you know, what I'm, what I put forward was attempting to really talk about our community as a whole. Like, there are some pieces for the school district. There are some pieces for the, the public, other public bodies around hiring. And, you know, and then let's look at the township pieces. But when we put all the pieces together, there, oh, and I should also mention social service dollars. So the fee-for-service that we would like to shift to at the township, the historic grants of the city, you know, these are all things that you all should inspect and look at how they work together. And I sit at the table at a number of meetings with Sheila Dodd, the city grants manager. This COVID has really brought us together in a, in a significant way. And I feel like our, you know, and I sit with City of Champaign, I sit with the City of Champaign Township, RPC. I'm in probably two to three meetings a week, me and my staff, looking at housing issues. And I have to say, James, like, that was definitely not the case a year ago. You know, we had one table and it was called the Rental Assistance Table. Now we have many tables. So I'm really heartened that I think there are a lot more people at the table having these conversations. And I'm really asking that everyone look at, what are the opportunities to leverage the COVID dollars to make some systemic changes that we've needed for a while? You know, and, and really weather the next storm, whether it's climate change or, you know, a smaller, you know, version of the pandemic or whatever, we need to be really thinking ahead for how to invest to support our whole community resilience.
Now, I'll just jump in, and Sheila Dodd will be giving an overview to council on the perspective actions, or housing from the city's perspective, both in what we do in terms of distributing funds, but also our ability to remove barriers to affordable housing. And we've been working with the Housing Authority on identifying those as well as some, that's one of the things I want to step up efforts on, is making sure that our Human Rights Ordinance is being followed in the City of Urbana. So, so we remove barriers. We also make sure we have as many opportunities as we can. And if I could build more places like Pinewood Place, I would love to. It's going to be a tremendous addition to the city. So I, I know there were many other people. Chris, let's see, who was next? I guess Chandra and then Christopher.
So Danielle, you touched on a lot, well, James' question touched on a lot of things I was wondering as well. And so you said in your, in your document here, eighty percent of the local households are not being served who need rental subsidies. So, and then Diane, you talk about barriers, like, how do we reach those eighty percent? If we're looking to grow the rental assistance program, how are we going to reach the eighty percent? Like, what can be done to reach them? And as far as barriers, what barriers tangibly exist that we can, we actually have the ability to knock down within our city?
Well, one of the most obvious barriers is the Human Rights Ordinance, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of source of income and felony conviction among many, many other factors. So that's a constant education and enforcement job in the City of Urbana and which, which we need to get back at doing. And part of those education dollars that are being allocated to the Human Resource and Equity Officers position is to step up those educational efforts. And we'll draw on the Human Relations Commission members to assist in that, and they're eager, I think, to help. We also worked with the Housing Authority before David Northern left. We had met with him, and he pointed out that there were some issues with Urbana charging property taxes for certain Housing Authority developments. And developers saw that as a barrier to building in Urbana private partners. And the private-public partnerships are very important in building affordable housing these days too. So, so it's those kinds of barriers.
So, and when you say education, do you mean to the landlords or to potential tenants or both?
We have a landlord-tenant ordinance. People need to know their rights and responsibilities. And, and we also have rental registration program, which is the vehicle through which we can educate people.
And just on that topic, Chandra, so we did it mailing, which I found a creative way of doing direct, every direct or mailing in Urbana. I will have to admit, Chandra, it didn't hit your household, because there's a few pieces that it didn't go to, but we could also do direct mail. And so we spent five thousand dollars to basically do postcards to every person in every household in Urbana. That's not a particularly large dollar figure, and it's something the city and the township could partner on in getting the word out, whether it's about rental assistance programs or anti-discrimination. The postcard we put out covered lots of things. It was a COVID-based postcard, but we can consider focused postcards. It's also the case that the city already mails to all landlords in September. This last year, they agreed to include an insert that went to all landlords. It was a letter from me reminding them of some of the laws that we regularly see violated, like a cap on lease fees of five percent, which really gets people underwater with back due rent. And frankly, landlords like have been pretty happy to correct that. They didn't know about it was the issue. And then we also cited the Human Relations Ordinance, and I think there's more work needed in that regard beyond that, that single mailing. I will say, as a Housing Authority member, what has been so frustrating is seeing the dollar, basically the dollars for housing choice vouchers that we leave on the table in Champaign County, because we can't get people into housing fast enough. So the HUD will not release dollars to us that we could access because we can't actually get people into housing. So that is like one of the biggest barriers, and it's discrimination in Champaign, Urbana, and Champaign, the discrimination is legal, and that needs to change. That's why I support the state bill. But it's also housing advocacy to help people navigate systems. You know, some application fees are fifteen dollars to fifty dollars. People actually don't have the money in their pocket just to cover some of the application fees. And so really, the township has been trying to beef up our housing advocacy work and also really leveraging our internship program, because that kind of housing search can be supported by, by our interns. So I would say, you know, that in addition to really looking at increasing tenant, some tenant-based rent assistance in smart ways that involve like exit strategies, and then growing those rental assistance dollars with combining the transportation dollars. So, you know, how do we ultimately, honestly, the way we get to everyone's needs met is we increase minimum wage and HUD, instead of cutting their budget for years, which is what we've seen, they increase their budget. That said, let's focus on what we can do, right? Like, we can, you know, we definitely need to talk to our congress folks, but those are the areas that we can do right now that actually would make a huge difference right now with the resources we already have.
And I would remind folks, we're approaching ten-thirty, which is the time we're supposed to adjourn unless council votes to extend. It's your pleasure.
I make a motion to end the meeting for, what is it, fifteen minutes, thirty minutes? What is the options?
Up till eleven o'clock. You've got up to thirty minutes.
So thirty minutes, up to thirty minutes.
I'll second.
Discussion. We have a roll call, please.
Okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkins? Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you for your responses, Danielle and Mayor Mollin. And I can, I have one more question, but I'm going to let Christopher go ahead, and I can just email you, Danielle. Thank you.
Go ahead, Christopher.
Okay, I have two questions and that are probably for Sheila Dodd on the first one, and Diane, you might want to jump in. If we created rent subsidy for one year for a tenant, would that be considered by the ARP as a one-time grant?
HUD has been very specific in their subsidy amounts, and I can only offer three months assistance. So all of the COVID funds that we got, we set aside a portion to help people that got behind from their rent and mortgage from COVID. But again, I could only offer three months assistance. But as Danielle pointed out, probably weekly throughout the initial stages of the pandemic, there was a group of providers, Champaign- Probably weekly throughout the initial stages of the pandemic, there was a, a group of providers, Champaign Township, both Townships. Um, the county that we had referrals. So if somebody went to the township and they needed assistance and. They couldn't do it, they didn't make the person fill out another application, they sent them to us. I helped them for three months and then I forwarded all the information to the county and the county could help them from there. So. We've tried to work cooperatively as best as we can to meet the needs of individuals, but I'm still restricted by the HUD guidelines. Um, the ARP money that's coming out, the guidelines aren't released yet and so. From what I've seen so far, that is not an option of something we can offer. Um, but Danielle did mention briefly that there are additional home dollars coming to the community. We had a, a discussion with our HUD rep last week on it and um Champaign County will be getting two point nine million dollars. Um, to, to serve people and they want us to focus on that zero to thirty percent range. People. They also ask that we be very intentional and cautious and think through because they want. Whatever we design to be done with community partners and then to be sustainable. So they don't want us to. Do something that's so deeply subsidized that it could never be sold outside of that agency. And as we all found out a few years ago, when the state of Illinois kind of shut down um funding to our social service agencies. That, that really hurt the community. Um, several of our nonprofits have shrunk their services back. Because they can't afford to take that risk of providing, um, you know, assistance or even TBRA assistance. Um, and then lose that opportunity for funding. So it's just a, a delicate balancing act. We've got great community partners that are working together, but at this point, Chris, the best I know is that's just not even an option.
Of the ARP money cannot be used for any length of time other than three months. Is that what I'm hearing?
The um, see, the HUD money that I get, the COVID, the COVID money cannot. The ARP, the final rules are not out yet, but the initial priorities that were covered in the beginning of the budget discussion. That is not one of the six items that we can focus on.
Okay, I guess that takes care of my second question.
I mean, I think our best bet is to be intentional and work with the community with the home dollars that'll be coming to us to see what we can best do.
And I would just say, we, we certainly have, you know, with our partners, we have learned that as dollars come in. That are not ongoing subsidies, like let's say it's a tenant-based rent assistance program that's one year or two years. Um, it's really important, what we, what we do is we screen people based on a vulnerability index. It's called a VI Spadat. It's a. It's a kind of a trauma-informed tool that's used to screen folks and their housing situation. And then we route people to particular programs based on their ability to be successful within that program. So trying hard not to put somebody who may have not had employment for a long time and been chronically homeless, but doesn't get SSI. Into a short-term housing situation that is gonna, where they're gonna be bumped out, right? Trying to like line people up for the right program. So that's a piece of the equation that requires some staff time and some screening. Um, but TBRA, the tenant-based rent assistance can be really, really helpful, especially for folks who. Um, have had a bump in the road. Uh, reentry is, I think it'd be a lot of success for that, that shorter term, meaning in a year to two years of rental assistance. Um, and other folks uh where they uh may be retraining for work. Um, uh, or folks who are waiting for disability um and working with township like. We now have SOAR advocates who can help people generally get disability within a reasonable timeframe, which reasonable is in quotation marks there. But what I mean is like one to two years instead of eight to ten years. So that means that somebody could get on disability payments within the timeframe of that TBRA. So I just want to state that like if we can coordinate together with partners, TBRA can be a really important piece of the equation if we put. You know, folks who are screened for appropriateness of that into that queue.
And Mary, to follow, to follow up on that a little bit too, the city right now is funding. Um, three different TBRA programs, one through the um Courage Connection. And one through Champaign County RPC, and then a third one through RPC that's targeted towards people who were impacted by COVID. At, which will give them a little bit of flexibility um in who they can offer assistance to.
Um, Mary Alice.
Um, do we have an estimate of how many reentry people we have per year on average, Danielle?
This is a great question and the way to answer the question is to look at Courage Connection. The, so Courage Connection used to run the only reentry program for women in the community. They closed that program. Um, and now the programs that I know that are available are through CUN. It's a very small program and First Follower is very small. Um, so I'd have to pull data on, you said there's folks reentering, but they may be coming and living with family. And that's different than folks who are reentering, who really don't have other places. To go, or they have a very temporary place to go so that they can parole because you need an address to be able to parole. Um, but then don't have a place. And then there's another group of folks who don't get a chance to parole. Because they don't have an address, but they're from here, like this is their home community. So. Um, I think I would have to pull some of the data that First Follower's did in their research to get you an answer to that question.
Okay, um, you know, one. Thing I've been thinking about is, which is the federal program that, you know, administers the voucher system, which is kind of a long-term rental assistance program. And then all the work the township has been doing is, is more of trying to keep people in their existing places with the rental assistance. Um, and then the, the transition with the purchase of those two buildings. So. It sounds to me like the need, the part of the need here is more of that long-term rental assistance. Um, in addition with some caveats in terms of emergency housing. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, so I think the easy way to say it is more of all please with some, you know, and I could queue up which. Um, be, we need emergency housing because there will always be situations where people are in emergency situations. You know, and there has to be for everyone, men, women, transgender folks, people with kids of various ages, et cetera. Um, and then I really think that um the, the concept of a continuum of care is that. The continuum of care is to move folks for, you know, homelessness is temporary, it's brief, it's one time. And folks are moving into um supportive housing and maybe more of like a TBRA or transitional. And then there is um subsidized housing options. And then even in the move to work model, there's, there's employment options so that, so people can uh get on employment. Um, to a level that they will no longer need those, that, that housing within an eight-year period. Um, so, you know, I would say we are, we were in terrible shape as a community when it came to emergency housing, just. For a community our size, it was wretched, you're, you know, for between. You know, eight years, eight years ago and four years ago, we're in better shape, even with the temporary pause, we're in much, much better shape. Um, and the area of, of need that's really unmet is um. Is women with kids across the whole county, although Urbana, you know, we've stepped up in Urbana. And then looking at. Um, uh, subsidy, you know, sub, housing subsidies. Um, and rental assistance, obviously because of the level of our rent burden is, is big.
Okay, all right, um. Yeah, I, I'll have more questions later, but thank you very much for the presentation.
Sure, absolutely.
Grace.
You, yeah, for the discussion, there's lots of big pieces out there on all sorts of levels with legislation and big picture kind of stuff. And if I wanted to kind of bring it back to those action items for us as council, where I think one big one is enforcing the Human Rights Ordinance. It sounds like maybe a resolution or a motion, or maybe some staff stuff will um take care of that on its own. I think that's definitely a big one. And I also have another question about um the emergency family housing. It was interesting in the report that there's only eight units for emergency family housing in the county that are really um. In high demand and have a long wait time. And I was wondering about the three, um, you know, good units for family that the city owns. And that were on pause for COVID stuff. And I was wondering if there's a way to bring those back into this picture.
Sheila, can you comment on that?
Um, sure. And then Grace, I wanted to give you, um, you had asked what the definition of affordable housing is. And so HUD defines that as thirty percent of your gross income for rent and utilities combined. So that's the HUD definition. Um, so a person making fifteen dollars an hour, um, seven hundred and eighty dollars a month would be their maximum rent without being considered. House burdened. And Aspen Court is about five to six hundred per unit. So they definitely meet that guidelines. Um, the three units that the city owns um cannot be used for emergency shelter. Uh, staff is looking internally at what our capacity is and how we're going to move forward with those houses. And we'll be bringing that to council for further discussion.
And any thoughts on um, from the mayor or other council members on how to pursue enforcing the HR ordinance? I know that we have our very new, um, you know, officer just today, so definitely give her some time. Um, but I know if you had suggested next steps, if um. You think staff can work that out or we need to do a motion or a resolution, if that would be helpful?
I don't believe we can make a, make a motion because. The details of this weren't, weren't on the agenda beforehand.
And this isn't an action.
To take action at this point. I, I think what we need to do is maybe focus. Have some, have a focused topic put on a committee of the whole agenda. That would allow us to uh create, create an action that come to a future city council meeting. And so we, we'd have to pick the direction that, that we want to focus on and, and ask staff to support us in, in putting that on the next. Next committee of the whole.
And I think the Human Relations Commission has, certainly has um suggestion and, and ideas as far as outreach for. The uh ordinance as well as um. Well, I'm losing my, it's late. Um, outreach for the ordinance, but as an enforcement and anyone with a specific complaint, you know, you can bring a complaint. Or concern to the Human Relations Commission and typically in the past, it was brought straight to the Human Rights and Equity Officer, the old HRO. And they would follow up and most of the time that can be resolved by, you know, staff. Reaching out to the specific company or landlord or employer in question. Rather than going through a, you know, formal complaint process. So again, the value of having, again, our staff member here. Um, and once you get settled in, doing some of that outreach is gonna make a big difference, I think. But the, the Celia Clark um and, and team, you know, resolved a lot of those concerns in that, in that way.
Yes, because I think that we need to do, um, you know, things are great. I think we need to do much more than complaint-based because there are certain people who. No one feel comfortable complaining and those who don't. So I would like to see a general um enforcement of it for all landlords by looking into their applications. Flagging for discrimination, sending them a notice about it and then following up with enforcement, um, along with that public awareness campaign.
And the other important part of this is making sure our uh rental property owners and landlords are registered in the rental registration program. Um, we need to make sure if you're renting property in Urbana and you are required to participate in the program, pay the fee for your properties and that. Gets you into the system. It allows, gives us contact information for the owners and managers. And um it provides for systematic inspections. So we are going to um. Be stepping up those efforts as well to make sure that anyone who should be registered is registered and we need the community's help in that as well.
Yeah, just uh actually I had a participant who was, who was looking for housing, um, because we're assisting them moving in. Who sent us, sent me an email today uh that basically was directly from the landlord. It was a large property management company saying, we don't rent to section eight vouchers. Um, we don't rent to people or voucher holders and this is a landlord that operates in Urbana. I would encourage you to look at the discrimination report that we created. They actually name the landlords that openly discriminate. You don't have to have a particular case, as you said, Grace. Um, the dynamics between landlord and tenants are difficult and it's uh. When folks are being discriminated against, it's very hard, it's a hard road for them to both be fighting for just to have housing. As well as to address discrimination. I don't think it's really their job. Um, I think it's the job of government to make sure that the, the law is enforced and I'm heartened to hear that that will be a priority. Um, with the new staff member. Um, so I really think that you just have to start looking at. Um, websites and applications and I will now forward the email from today to Ms. Boyd. Um, thank you Carla for joining us, um, so that you can see that, you know, recent um violation and I've sent. Violations in the past over and I just, um, you know, I really look forward to resolution on that. It is a big piece of the equation in this.
We also, you work, will. Have always worked closely, the city has always worked closely with the CU Tenant Union as well. Sure, Grace.
Uh, what are the consequences for a landlord that has been renting and they are not registered? Or they, we find them to be discriminating or their properties to be um. Not up to, to code or whatever that is. What, are, are there consequences that people face?
Yes.
Uh, financial fines, anything like that? Because.
I can respond to two thirds of that. I'll leave the HRO question to, to someone more versed. Uh, in terms of rental registration, if someone is not registered and we have obviously made attempts to get them to register. Uh, ultimately, I mean, we could. Uh, have the tenant have to move, which isn't a positive for the tenant, of course, but we also don't want the. Um, the landlord to benefit from getting rent from someone when a unit is not, um, when a unit is not registered. So um, there's that piece. In terms of some complaints, um, I assume you mean like property maintenance issues. Uh, yes, there's a complaint process and enforcement process. Uh, usually things are resolved and we don't need to go to court, but in some of the larger cases, of course, court is, is an option. Um, but we really do try to just get compliance. We're not going, you know, going for, for fees. We really just need to see the property improved. That's our summary.
Okay, do, 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 do we ever take anybody to court when they don't fall into compliance?
For property maintenance, sure, yes. And there's some, been some notable um, uh, cases in the past few years, yes.
Okay. And then what, they, they can't rent, they're not allowed to rent, or if they are, if, what if they just do it anyway? Or what if the property people don't, don't even after going to court or whatever, they just choose to not maintain the property? What happens then?
Well, then the, the courts will continue to be involved.
Okay. Okay.
Any other comments?
Uh, one other thing, if, if, what if, what if, um, and I guess that, because Lori did answer two thirds of the question. So, but if there is a, a landlord that is discriminating. What are the consequences for that landlord? Is there anything? Do we like take them to the Human Rights Commission or do we, what, what do we do? Do they go to court? Do we sue them? Do, what happens, what happens then? Are, does anyone know the answer to that question?
Typically, the first step, as I understand it, was to reach out to the landlord. And, and um, I don't know the exact steps that were followed after that.
Okay, so.
But there is a process, there is.
Just to, and it's in our report as well, if you take a look at basically, so it says, should discriminatory actors fail to comply, the Human Rights Commission has the authority, indeed the responsibility under Section 12-03 to certify the matter to the city attorney for enforcement proceedings. Now, it doesn't have to come from the Human Rights Commission. I mean, the HRO could do this, the city council would do it, but this refers to this. The city attorney shall in turn, quote, shall in, city attorney in turn, quote, shall institute in the name of the city of Urbana civil proceedings, including the seeking of such restraining orders and temporary or permanent injunctions as are necessary to obtain compliance with the commission's orders. So anyway, there, you know, it's pretty clear what needs to happen and it's a great part. It's my favorite section in the in the ordinance. I encourage, like, looking at it again. I actually served on state council for eight years and when we did this report, I read it again and was like, wow, there are aspects that I forgot were there. I don't remember those pieces. So I think reading the ordinance, it's it's elegant, well-written, it's been in place for a long time. It's it needs enforcement.
Yeah, okay.
I appreciate the conversation with council and our representative from township. Definitely appreciate the input and I'm looking forward to doing at least our immediate Urbana City Council parts that we can with all of these pieces and keeping the big picture in mind and doing our particular part.
I would like to say I'd like to hang out to you with you until 11 o'clock every night, but it would be nice, sir, if it was at the Hood Nanny in the future. I just, I want to put it out there. Which is probably ended at this point, but is a great Monday night urban establishment.
Some of us don't know what happens on Monday night outside of this building.
We're gonna have to convince the Hood Nanny to do like a Tuesday night. So while Champaign is suffering, you can you can come out for some live music.
Sounds like a plan. Any other comments tonight? Thank you very much. Thank you, Danielle. Thank you, Sheila.
Thanks so much.
Counsel for bringing this and with no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Great. Have a goodie.